Now our meeting is called the Royal. They have great activity. Uh, our first item in the work session is to discuss the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you. Uh, the first item tonight is the opportunity for the board to approve uh three new applicants to the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee. As you know, we have seven openings for uh adult members uh to the committee and six openings if we count HOA and Oak Street Center, me and our whole comprehensive for the potential to appoint students to represent schools, uh high schools on the committee. Uh, at this point, we have three applications, two for the open seven seats and one student has a particular interest. And I want you to know that uh I appreciate all of you for recruiting your friends and neighbors to be on the committees. And I know that it's a difficult time for us to recruit our friends and neighbors, especially when I thank Francesca for deploying books to recruit from our school leadership organizations. Student unions and even folks like Mike who make their way around to community meetings, they have the opportunity to serve on board committees. So thanks for the outreach. Sorry for the low number of applicants at this point. My recommendations tonight would be that the board consider the applications that are in front of you and choose who you'd be interested in uh appointing to the committee at this time. Any or none of the candidates who put in and then we would keep the seats open ongoing so that if a community member were to apply for the committee and fill in the vacancies that we would have the opportunity to bring them to a future work session. Look at their application and appoint them ongoing, so. Um, the applications you have are from Jennifer Bell, Heather Welch, and Azren Edwards. And uh, we reached out to them and let them know they had the opportunity to present themselves tonight. Jennifer Bell responded and gave me a paragraph to read. So with your permission, I'll read what she said to introduce herself to the board. Hello, my name is Jennifer Bell. First, I'd like to apologize. I'm unable to attend this meeting in person. My intention was to attend via Zoom. Is she?
Um, I gave she had a link to.
Thank you. If Travis is reading this intro, then my son's soccer tonight is running late. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself and potentially volunteer with the CCAC. I'm a native Oregonian and have resided in Hillsborough for the past nine years. My husband grew up in Hillsborough, graduating from Blenko High School. I have one son currently attending Patterson Elementary and a second son that will be attending Patterson in the future. I became aware of the CCAC while I was researching opportunities to volunteer with HSD. I strongly believe in the importance of a strong foundation, especially in the education of our children. CCAC piqued my interest as an opportunity to serve in HSD while also helping to provide a strong educational foundation for our children. Thank you for this opportunity. And you have, we'll packet the uh application that we did. Opportunity to discuss um how you'd like to proceed normally what we've been said. I'd be in favor of these candidates and then whip around and see if the majority of the board would be interested in it at the regular session with the board to take action on the official appointment to the committee for your term.
And maybe any questions for Travis? Right, anybody have any thoughts on the applicants?
There are seven opening seats, so um there are two applicants. The board would, it would be your prerogative to either appoint both one or none of the applicants for the seven openings for adults. And then Azren Edwards has applied to represent Century High School, so that would be a student appointment to us. And usually we do things year to year.
Do you have any thoughts? I'm sort of mindset of if we have seven openings and two people apply, we think well, that's what I, so my sort of thought is, you know, I think the era of the abundance of riches we've had and people volunteering like crazy, like you over here. Not to tell any of you that volunteering for public service puts a little bit of a target on your back. So. It may be less appealing than it was, or I don't, I, you know, I don't think it's for you about, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a problem without reach, I think. Yeah, when I, when I talk to people, they knew that the opportunity was there and just would chose not to pursue it.
I think one, one value of the group and the board has traditionally been to try to make the committee representative of the demographics of our community. I think, you know, three of the members who are returning are identified as community members of color. There's seven, that'd be important to them. Uh, two new members, I think there's still open seats enough that we can intentionally recruit for more diversity. But I think that's on all of us to spread that word and, you know, to diversify the committee. Each year the committee does a self census at the end of the year and says, how do we identify demographically and what student groups are we able to represent from where we sit from our experiences? And so we can continue to share that information with the boards if you have the data that you need to diversify.
Um, yeah, I think that the committee's obviously, I mean, certainly, I feel like it's incredibly valuable. Does really work and having a variety of backgrounds and perspectives is always very encouraging to me. I feel like a lot of the people that section will be any word concerned about. And so I'm heartened to see seven people, most of them I know, and I know are dedicated folks returning or returns continuing. And um, I think it makes perfect sense that if there being no concerns or red flags, uh, to appoint all people that have applied and then uh make sure we continue to let people know that we have more openings.
Any other comments? We uh, I give you this. Or uh, I probably won't make the motion, so. Or actually, yeah, have you written names in my spots? So that will have to repeat it back. I have a name. So everybody seems okay, had not, whoever, always have people that will fly.
Um, there's.
This says spot one, spot two, and student on that motion. So uh, if you are thinking you might be the person who wants to make commotion, Travis can write their names on here. Or to. Thank you, Travis. Any other questions regarding the CCAC? And you want to join us at the table? And next time, just to discuss the boundary adjustment process and until that conversation.
That. So um, as you know, we have a building under construction right now, South Hillsborough. P S twenty-nine for the next hour or two, hopefully. And one of the uh jobs we have ahead of us is to establish the boundaries for that new building. So what I brought forward tonight is uh kind of an explanation of what that process could look like. Some guiding principles we've used in the past when we've gone through this process and then a proposed uh timeline. So if it's okay, I'd like to just review these guiding principles to make sure that we're on the same page. Yep. So um, a big one that we knew that has driven our work in the past is to maintain our existing feeder patterns. So with an elementary school, that means that we're, we're not interested, we haven't been interested in moving kids from one feeder group to another as we establish these boundaries. Um, so trying to keep kids in their distinct ear. Um, to minimize the number of schools and students that are impacted by the boundary adjustment. I think one of the things we're going to be discussing um as a committee, um, as we move our forward is the potential to realign some boundaries for some of the other schools beyond just Rosedale where all of the students in South Hillsborough currently attend. Um, to try to clean up some of those. So we may include buildings outside of just Rosedale and the new school in the boundary process. But again, to try to minimize the number of schools and students that are impacted. Minimize changes for families who've been impacted by past boundary adjustments. This is something that um, when we did the twenty, was it fourteen? Thank you, twenty-fourteen boundary process. Was a real consideration because we were moving students, we were moving neighborhoods potentially that had been moved in the past. So um, we try not to do that. We've got a pocket that uh we moved in the past. We try not to impact it again. Um, make adjustments for the long term. Um, obviously, that's going to be a little more challenging this time because eventually there will be more schools in that South Hillsborough area, which will require us to redraw those boundaries again. But we try to get long term. Um, consider transportation costs associated with the, the change. We try to maintain existing neighborhoods again in the twenty-fourteen uh boundary process. We were in, we had some potential changes that would have basically split neighborhoods, split streets. Um, and we try to avoid that. We try to include students who are near to each other uh together as much as we can. Um, create an appeal process. So if you've got a student that um wants to stay at their current school, we want to make sure that kids have that opportunity. And given our capacity, um, that that shouldn't be a problem, should help. Plenty of capacity at both the new school and the existing schools. Uh, consider transfer requests to other districts. So we've got students who live outside of any of these boundaries that are interested in attending what's these new schools. We want to have a process for that. Uh, consider equitable access and opportunities in the boundary adjustment process. This deals primarily with um schools next, uh, do language schools, I think, or doc, those special opportunities to play with their ultimate. So those are the guiding principles that we could use in the past. Um, and I think for the most part, they're still they still make sense. So I just wanted to get any feedback with the board, my doubt on those guiding principles or considering the new ones.
Do they have any thing they want to share on the guiding principles?
I didn't see any input from the committee.
Oh, yeah. Hold that thought. That's, that's the next part of this process.
Just not one of our guiding principles. We have lots of input. You're sharing us just lots of input.
But I got every one of them, but and we could certainly include a bullet, uh, who are guiding principles.
Yeah, I was just wondering also that when you think about uh like the demographics of the student body, how exactly it's like social, non-negotiable.
Well, it, it can't, um, it really depends on how wide of a net we're going to cast here. We're really just trying to decide what the current Rosedale boundary is going to become part of the new school. Um, we're talking primarily just those new neighborhoods. So um, if we start including other buildings in the process, then it certainly can't.
Yeah, I was just thinking about, like realistically, a lot of the development there is not affordable. And so you have to have the various. And then when we draw the boundaries, I'm sure that there is intentionality. I just wanted to raise that.
Yeah. That will certainly become part of the conversation.
Why not have community involvement as a guiding principle?
Certainly can. That'd be a little better.
It's always been included in the makeup of the committee.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. But we're just, I mean, the first question was discuss our guiding principles. It feels like.
Yeah.
Being intentional, making sure that we call that out. So that'd be a good idea. Everybody else, have any thoughts on that? I mean, against that idea?
I think you should go through the.
Yeah.
The process, I think you'll see that that's definitely part of what we're trying to talk.
Yeah, I did. I follow you, but yeah, I was one of the board members on the equality one, so I get it. But it also feels like maybe mentioning it so bad.
Okay, all right. Um, so then we get into more of the process related uh part of the, of the yield here. So um, the first thing we'll do with the committee once we form it is to renew the board policy around uh school boundary areas. Um, we'll review the data we've collected from the Long Range Planning Committee, which is really um, the enrollment information from Davis Demographics. Um, new developments, obviously with this school in particular, it's in the middle of a new development. And then if we're considering neighborhoods that have been impacted in the past, we'll try to uh highlight those so that we, the committee is aware. I'm also going to be looking for, um, well, by proposed makeup of this committee includes the superintendent or just designate, which I'm guessing is going to be me unless my. They're kind of like, um, principals from the impacted schools. So right now, we know that's going to be Rosedale. It could potentially be Brookwood. It could potentially be Witch Hazel. Um, so if we decide that we want to include those buildings in this process, then we'll invite a building principal. We want to have representatives from the recruitment department. They help us, you know, with the boundary, the existing boundary information. Uh, Carol at equality. Yeah, wasn't that, yeah. Um, our bond communication specialist will be involved, Jane. Um, I'd like to have two board members and then I want to have parent representatives from each of the impacted buildings. And preferably parent involvement from the impacted areas that we're talking about. So if we're talking about moving an area that's currently in Rosedale boundary to Brookwood, we want to have somebody that lives in that area where they're. So those are the folks we're looking for. Um, and I would love to be able to enjoy them.
But really, you mentioned that it may impact other buildings besides Rosedale. Are you thinking that at the most it would be Brookwood and Witch Hazel? Like changing in Brooklyn, over fall in Northwest Union?
No, that's not, that's not something we're considering for fun. Ideally, we'll have a proposal or several proposals that we can bring forward to this committee to consider rather than just saying, all right, what do you guys think? It seems to work better to have some starting list. Um, so we'll come forward with some proposed um, what some of the ideas are that we have um for consideration. Prior to us meeting with the committee the first time, we will have, as you'll see on here, we've had one meeting with disparate folks to talk about this. We'll have another one, um, if it's the fourth of November. Where we'll hash out maybe some additional um proposals that we'll want to report. But if there are any board members who are interested.
My recollection is that quality was a main and alternate. Is that what you were thinking? Or you just want two?
I think it's given the training of how many on how many posts or how many uh different potential pockets were, were talked about.
What is it, time commitment or?
So, good question. Um, thank you. If you follow me along here, um, we've had one staff planning meeting that included myself, Casey, Carol, Jane, Tom Luba from our tech department, um, Lindsay wasn't able to attend that meeting. Audrey was. Um, had another one of those meetings coming up on the board. Where we'll review the, the boundaries, right, and muffle some of both. Um, starting on sometime the week of November fourteenth, we're proposing to have our first meeting. It's all on page seven of our package. Yes. So then we would have follow-up meetings uh the week of the twenty-eighth, basically every other week then. Through through December and January. And we'll take as, as long as we need to get through that. At some point, we'll want to do a community meeting or two um to share with the broader community, you know, where we're headed. Get their input. Have another follow-up meeting or two of the committee to to react to the input that we've received. Then we'll have another community meeting um to roll out what I hope will be a final proposal. My goal is to have all of that done by the end of January. And then to bring a proposal to the board at your March meeting. So I'm thinking it will be probably four, maybe five meetings of the committee um starting in November, the week of November fourteenth and running through January. So that's the.
You're in the daytime or evening?
It'll, they'll be, sure. That's what we've done the past second. That seems to get the best.
And do you think in, in person, hybrid?
I would like to do in person. It would be choose someplace near the impacted area for those who can. We can do it uh at Rosedale Elementary School. We can do it at our office, the, the starting van. Yeah, that, that will make sense. Yeah.
Maybe not the Brooklyn Library.
Yeah, probably not. Yeah.
Over here.
Sorry. And how, how long, how long are these like three, three-hour meetings?
You know, generally, they'll be an hour and a half, maybe two hours. But and the reason we, we kind of structure it when we do is we come out with a proposal, we share it with folks. We take some input, but generally people need a little guide, the kind of process, what, what they've seen. Um, so there's not generally a whole lot of we don't try to solve all the, the problems with the, a proposal necessarily at that meeting. So we'll take input, we'll, we'll find out if people need additional information. Um, and then we'll try to during the week between meetings, get any additional information to folks, answer questions so that we're ready at the next meeting to start in with the uh revised proposal. So I would say an hour and after two hours. Beth, would you say that?
I, yeah. Hour and a half, probably.
I mean, we did have the meetings between the meetings, but it, we were feeling a little lot.
Yeah, that's what we have.
So.
Eight schools.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, I would, I mean, in middle, I follow it was easier, but that's what I was on and it was pretty. Yeah, and that one was also virtual. That was completely virtual. All we had was virtual. It was somewhat early days of pandemic virtual system, technology struggle. Yeah, it was a challenge.
Well, the staff will be in between meetings to put together new maps.
Yeah. All right. So any board members interested in this, we also, I guess, should have these in Sheehan, but. And I don't need, oh, she answered. Okay. I don't need it to be, but yeah, so I guess just been thinking about it. Would be great. Cause the meetings will begin on the week of the fourth. You, you don't need board member participation week of the fourth.
Yes, okay.
I'd say maybe I guess be thinking about that and what their availability. Evening on those days.
But I would say probably six, the seven thirty or six thirty to eight, something like that.
And the fifteenth is our course. Right? Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. So probably not that day. Probably not. Any else need to share with us? That's it? Looking forward to any other question about this process. Well, the process is pretty well laid out on the page seven of the packet. I, I enjoyed being on the equality one for its worth.
I think we'll have a little more input on this.
Some of the processes are more enjoyable than, yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks for.
Thank you. All right, uh, SIA update. Travis and Michelle are bookless. Who wants to go, who wants to start?
Oh, I'll pick it up. Yeah, well, we have tonight our student investment account board report that's required by the Department of Education for this particular branch. Um, it's also, it doesn't stand outside of our regular audit process. So it's all, all of the testing that's done with the rest of our finances are going to be included in our annual financial report. But this is a standout requirement from what would be, so Travis and I are going to share some information with you guys about how twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two was spent specifically. And um, kind of how it feeds into the rest of our accelerated learning plan. So we talked a lot about that during our budget development process last year as we're coming for this year. So we're going to go ahead. Uh, before we get started, I just want to do a quick shout out for Christine Woodard in the business office. She has been really focused on administering this, this big brand. Um, it's unusual and actually the whole first part. I know Travis is too. It's been a whole nother adventure with uh O D P, uh, our sports adventures. So that will get started.
It gets somebody downstairs.
Literally.
I think we've done that last couple of times. Just say, next slide. I bet magically after.
Next slide, please. Only level. It's the owl. Watching us. Um, this is just a reminder, these next slides are, I'm going to put you really quickly. These are just reminders about what this student investment account is. Students are best acting, which entirely does more than just student investment account, including supporting our initiative like our Latinx student success. Um, programming and early learning. So tonight, we're going to just contain our, our report to last year's investment, student investment accounts. Please advance both slides. A reminder that uh we did not define the areas of expenditure, but the four buckets allowable under the student investment account are investment in class size and case load reduction, extension of instructional time, investment, well-rounded learning opportunities, and investment in student health and safety. And part of our um process is that local boards approve the budget and our grant application. And then once a year, the boarding community receive an annual report. That's tonight. One more slide please. A reminder that our student investment account is one area. It's a fraction of our, our overall budget process. And it is nested within our process for continuous improvement and also that just the strategic plan. Where it's involved in that as well, as many community stakeholders in our continuous improvement planning and our strategic plan. SIA is woven as one set of resources into our investments to create equitable outputs for students. One more slide. As you know, um, twelve of our goals in our continuous improvement plan, of those, I think ten are already written into different grants for the state. We choose a couple of them. One of those is our investment in the diversification of teachers and counselors of color. Another is our priority number six for digital learning and the investment digital technology. All the others are kind of added to us in different grants and um, strings attached to those outcomes. So these are our continuous improvement plan goals. And we come up with our next strategic plan. Um, we're going to uh have those goals, create our new continuous improvement plan and one slide forward please. Our Department of Education has figured out that we have enough pots of money, enough state level grants, that it would be great for them to get from each school district in an integrated guidance or integrated continuous improvement plan that we use together, these different allocations of resources into some common goals. So we've said this before, this is just review that our SIA grant application contains how we're using SIA dollars to achieve our goals for students in HSD alongside things like high school success, our C T U plans. One more slide please. Um, an opportunity uh that we have is to engage stakeholder voices ongoing. And we need to, in our report for our SIA grant, um, tell O D P how it is that we engage stakeholder groups. So we've taken that to the next level in the last year by engaging with performance back. You've met Lauren Clacke and she is coordinating along with us, uh, engagement sessions and surveys and focus groups and empathy interviews with different stakeholders in the Hillsborough community. And all that's going to culminate in a new strategic plan and then update to our SIA. Forward one more. We do call out in our continuous improvement plan and in our SIA application, our stance. So I'll just read that out loud for the board. For all the. For all H S D goals, students who identify as Native American, Latinx, Black, African, African American, multiracial, emerging bilingual students who are identified as talented and gifted, and students who are experiencing disabilities. Foster care, poverty, and or housing instability will get the support they need, ensuring that the rate of improvement as measured by our SMART goals. For our traditionally underserved students allows them to achieve at the same levels as students who have traditionally benefited from our system. So it's important to know that when we make decisions and we get stakeholder input, we're trying to figure out how traditionally underserved groups get what they need. Um, in order to be successful in our system. One more slide please. And our partners at Performance Back, their uh reason that we chose them was that their system uh continuous improvement aligns with ours. We look at data, we analyze where we are. And then we create solutions, uh particularly for our local groups, but also for all students in H S D. You've seen this slide from Lauren for. One more slide please. And some of you have been through, I think Lauren shared the entire data book with you, but for the groups that went into the deep dive, we're now in disaggregating data. This is the. Slide shows just one example of how we disaggregate data. Um. By race and ethnicity, and this happens to be in the area of student engagement, school climate, and student student relationships and behaviors. If you read on, it says student teacher relationships and behavior. So. Um, we're taking a deep dive into who our students are, who our families are, and what feedback they're giving us that will drive changes for our continuous improvement. You go. I'll turn it back to Michelle to talk about how that plays out with our S I A process originally and then how it's changed just a little bit given the last two years of our. Context in H S D.
Thanks, Travis. So with our, uh, this is a slide that may have familiar folks that went through our planning for twenty twenty one and twenty one, twenty two, and then also budget development for this year. This is an S I one point oh, this was a spending plan. Um, but we just extended from year one of S I A into year two with this last year. So bringing that back here as a reminder. Of the color coding system that we use and kind of the way the pie is broken out. Yellow represents uh student health and safety. And the light yellow represents um costs that were current service level items in the general fund that had to be reduced from the general fund. And um we uh continue those services, we came those services by paying for the S I A dollars. Similar to um size reduction, ten well-rounded education. The darker shades represent new investments, where the lighter shades are continuation of current service. So just a reminder, and that is our was our spending plan as we went forward. And on the next slide, please. You see that our ratios changed significantly, actually, as we moved through twenty one, twenty two. And in response to uh kind of real time feedback that we were getting from families as students were returning in for our system. We had last year kind of some interruptions and operations, whether it was availability of certain staff. But we needed for our original plan, so we were able to shift things around and still provide really robust programs just that were eligible under S I A. But this was the final kind of look back in terms of spending. So the things that were new last year were um we hired uh student workers through their uh paid internship program. Um, we continue to support the right training initiative in schools. It's part of well-rounded learning. Um, we have a mentor coordinator for staff. Uh, language liaisons uh to work with our um diverse families. Um, an inclusion specialist to support our community schools implementation plan. Um, some high school C T E uh teachers for those. Um, this, because it's an ongoing funding source, we identified um twelve F T E to transition our middle schools into a seventh period day. Um, and then we added um ten F T E, vice counselor, and psychologists to help support our students in the well-rounded and uh sweet health and safety area. The biggest expansion from the original would be our after-school. Um, program and that extension of instructional time, and that was specific to uh the needs of our families and um complemented by a supplement from the city of Clinsborough. They would spend. Uh, from this. By this eight dollars. Okay. Advance please. So this is just a kind of a table that kind of walks through our our experience so far with S I A. It's been a little bit of a roller coaster. When we first engaged our community and we were planning for twenty twenty one. Uh, it was announced we'd get sixteen million dollars, and so that would have been a significant investment over what we had planned to spend. But then uh we went into the twenty twenty one year, we were coming out of the initial extended spring break time of COVID, and. The state really pulled back from the investment in the twenty twenty one year. So we really only ended up with one third. Of our original allocation, super limited in what we could do with that, and it will see provided for a continuation of those current service level titles. So twenty one, twenty two was really the first year that we were fully funded uh for the student investment account. Um, we viewed that differently from our S R comes, those fed temporary federal dollars, and we targeted this towards things that we'd like to see continue into the future. And not just be uh tempers work. So you can see that there is a significant. Investment in class size, case load reduction. Um, the biggest bucket, of course, is student health and safety. That was a, you know, top priority for us last year. Um, and again, instructional time. And then well-rounded learning. Any questions on these last two slides before I turn it back to Travis?
I had a question in the paper for both, but a couple of um meaning to go. When we were talking about the data of like our. Student performance, but. One of the questions I asked Audrey, that whether what is a. Measuring outcome system that we have. That everyone is. Like being measured by, because a lot of what we opt out kind of impacts our data. So my wondering is. Now that we have, like, what have this year that they're like fully funded, and then next year. But like, how do we then? Collect that data to then see out of this investment. Where did we see performance improvement, outcome improvement? And like, try to let try to try to correlate. What we're spending on to like that like that data set, and I don't know where. How we're. How we're bearing those two things.
Audrey can help me on the details on this, but in general, when we look at the achieved data like during our strategic planning process, and we look at literacy and math, for example, at elementary level. We try to figure out, so. With the suspension of. Smarter balance assessment during COVID time, how do we set that baseline? So what we try to do is use um H S D driven assessments. For kids in elementary school, whatever the reading scores, and especially in bilingual schools, what are the, it's only by literacy and English and Spanish. And then in middle school, it's math assessments, and we look at that, and who needs interventions? I think over time, our goal would be, let's use locally driven assessments and the big smarter balance assessments to just. Decide what the return on investment is for the critical purchases we make, the investment in educational assistance. Et cetera.
And I think that balance that we had basically, obviously, with part around being suspended, and then we also shifted to a different assessment for our literacy-based assessment. Right prior to the pandemic. The timing was rough on all of that, so I don't think we actually um. Have solid, you know, literacy data that's a baseline for us, because we were in that influx of comprehensive distance learning and then returning. So I really do feel like this year, what you're saying, it really is kind of as the last year may or may not be considered our new baseline, because I also would argue that was a rough spring and tough time to test. So I really think some of the assessments that we have coming out right now from math that we just finished with middle school and then our um bond screener, E C B M for elementary, and. Um, we'll be doing a running record, and all of those are going to start dumping into our synergy and easy way programs so that we can start to look at that, and then we'll have another um. Look at that as well in the spring to kind of see our growth and what happened there, and then we'll be able to take that. Uh, as but kind of do a little bit of a correlation to see where we match and balance up to. So I think I feel um much more solid going into this year, having that like system ready to go, and I feel like words, it's getting easily acceptable in the synergy too. Um, which is really helpful.
I think one of the things that I want to see from this is specifically because of the S I A's goal, the impact specific student demographic. And like, what is the data showing us if we're spending the money that is leading that impact or or not, then like. What changes do we have to make? But I'm wondering if. Do we have to wait a whole year? To get it because the assessment is only done once, or like, is there anything that we can do? Or is it just annually?
That was one of the questions I was talking about, Lauren. Uh, so at the end of our strategic planning process, we can set metrics that we want to hyper focus on. There are some that get published in the paper, we need to focus on those too, but one strategy for us would be to figure out. What's the readings for we care about, and then do we do quarterly updates? Do we have a dashboard that says where those? You know, where are we moving the needle? And then. It's hard to to decide like a causal relationship on that needle moving, but we could say that. Our investment wonders a lot of V S, like our violating the reading protocol and our training of teachers with. Letters training. Happened at these schools, and we see it very good. And that would be how we were, we calculate academic return on investment. When we spend S I A dollars to move, especially for folk and groups, and they know literacy.
I think that's like the biggest kind of clarity really, with like, we've had all this. Mismatch of. Money one year, but not the other, definitely one year, but not the one, and like this is the first year that we can have that collection.
Also, just. I totally agree with you. I would just manage our selective expectations, because what, when I think about second graders right now, I know that um. Sub jobs are filling. And staffing is tough. We we aren't able to fill the traditional level right now because we don't have subs. And so while we have the tools and the professional role we're coming into play, we're also trying to stabilize our systems. So when we start looking at quarterly indicators, and we don't see a giant swing of the needle immediately, I think we should. Not pull back on the strategies that we might have, but see those through. I think that's going to be a difficult, everybody right now thinks the pandemic's over, and it's time to see results. I think we we also need to be patient and invest heavily in the strategies that we know.
And I think also probably highlighting like. What are the things that are not the same this year? Like, not having subs this year is like really going to impact. Whatever data, or like, maybe that wasn't an issue two years ago, but it is now.
I appreciate that.
Other questions for Michelle? Uh, in the in the pie chart one, a couple of dashes, but I think they're probably C S L. If you had to just roughly guess, what percentage of S I A. Funding is being used to backfill. For a lack of general fund funding that we say.
About two thirds of it.
About two thirds of it. So about two thirds of what should be targeted investments are being spent to backfill. Budgetary shortfalls from state.
If that's the case, then there's no way that we can get it. There's no way we could be meeting the target. For the original one. If. I'm I'm not. I'm not casting dispersions on the decision on how to use the money. We absolutely made the right decision on how to. However, going back to Erica's question, what that tells. The two thirds of the money was used to backfill. What the state is not giving us, then no, we didn't meet those targets. No, we weren't able to help. Or be intentional about helping certain students that are under either. Overrepresented and underachieving and or were disproportionately impacted by. The massive global event. So.
And next item, we'll discuss how to close that beat that Lucas Day legislative.
Yeah, I guess I'm. I think I agree. It goes back to your expectations of like, what is it that we're going to see? But really only a third. Is going into targeted investment. Then what? What can we aspire to? Grow. You know. But an improvement for with a third of targeted investment dollars. To do realistically.
Yeah, because if if I'm following you direct. We would be talking about potentially one third of the. The fourteen nine, is that correct?
Yeah.
So that means. We're only using. Barely two million to work on the class and the case reductions. You know, I mean, it looks even worse as you go down and look at the line items, right? Because they're critical. Um. Wow. I'm I'm glad you said it, but I had no idea that. Again, no dispersions. And no negative comment on the decision. We had to do, we had to do to keep people employed and to keep the district running, to do everything that we did. Totally in for that, but at some point, somebody's going to have to go back up to the legislature. So you know, this money you talked about? Didn't exactly meet the goal, and here's what we.
And related. When we look at the slide with certain ten sources of funding. Special education is one of the most expensive things we have. Uh, how is there a? Way to sort of represent how underfunded federally mandated? Special education is one of the most expensive things we do. How underfunded is I D E I A funding from the federal government?
It's significant. It's it's.
It's maybe twenty five percent.
Dollar match.
You get like twenty five percent of what we should be getting to fund it. Is that about right?
Yeah, we spend about forty million dollars of the general fund. Um, supporting students on the I P's on top of the general fund, you know, regular instructional services that they receive. Um, and our grant is. I don't know, one million dollars.
Is that mainly through personnel? Is that mainly through personnel?
But if if I D I A, yeah, I D E I A, sorry, a lot of letters. Uh, were fully funded. As the federal government said it should be. That would really considerable on a budgetary pressure level.
So we could advocate state, we could advocate federal.
Sure.
Is walking two down when you vote.
Well, I I think what we might be talking about is. Forget the question that I'm asking. Is the state not compliant? Because they said the.
Yes, but they only have to write a report.
Ah, and now we're now we're. Okay, so we are noncompliant. We know we're not compliant. We simply tell them why we're noncompliant. And then it just.
Yeah, well, it's a constitutional. Requirement to fund the quality education model. If you don't, you have to write a report to say why.
Right.
And every year since it's been a constitutional requirement, they've written a report instead of funding that that up. So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions.
I have Travis.
Send a question to me just to your slide and real quick, there's the report that was the template that um. O D P offered for districts to report on their uh. The impact of the money, the barriers we face, the engagement we did with the community, and any feedback we had is available at that link on our website. Our presentation today was way more exciting than the report. And then next steps would be the last slide, which is our ongoing community engagement. You know, you can tell by our, the way we talk about this, that um the way we do high school success or. Preschool or S I A is about engagement with the community ongoing, leaving that. Feedback into our strategic planning process, and then O D P is integrating the way we report on different grants, and we'll in March submit our integrated continuous improvement plan. And then our budget process will spring out of all of that, all of our goals, go align our resources to those goals. I think what we have in H S D is really good teamwork across grants and across different areas of curriculum and broken development. So that's a pride point for us to celebrate. I think the next step is how we move that needle on on our priorities. Thank you for listening to our report.
And as. This concludes that meets the legal obligation for the nondependent grant.
We will publish the minutes back to O D P at tonight's meeting, which is evidence that we're reporting to the boarding community and the public forum in house for this.
Any other questions for Travis or Michelle? Alright, our next item is led by Ben, but I think it's also intended to be more of a reformed discussion a little bit of what we would like as a board. For our legislative priorities to be, so that you can really get us started and then we can. Break it from there.
Next thing.
Oh, we got the. Something out there.
So thank you for letting me have time to revisit this discussion. I thought it was great the way we did it last month, so I asked if we could have time to do it again and work session this month. I think what that sets us up for, unless I hear. Differently from you this evening, is that I feel like we're going to be able to gather. The bulk of our remaining inputs, so that at your November meeting, I'll be able to put um a draft of the priorities on. So that at your November meeting, I'll be able to put a draft of the priorities on for reading. And hopefully you'll be able to adopt in December, which would put us in a super great position heading into January. And being able to talk to elected officials before the session. So hopefully that's where we find ourselves after tonight's discussion. What I have for you, the, the top page of the little stapled packet is something that I asked. David Williams to put together and he is basically the legislative advocacy policy person. That now works for the ESD, formerly worked for Beaverton School District. And in last month's discussion, I forget who brought it up, but just kind of talking about sure would be nice to have a lobbyist. Who was working for us down in Salem, who we could have do some of these things. And while David doesn't specifically work for us, as an ESD representative and very knowledgeable. You know, what do I want to call them? Advocate, policy person. And he, he certainly is available to us to help share messages. And I think a lot of what he provided here are things that, that we were already talking about as well, just kind of a reiteration of. Of how the stage is going to be set heading into the twenty three session. One thing that we won't, that will be a little different with the governor change. And being so unpredictable this time around is that we won't necessarily have that governor's budget as early as we have in the past. Which kind of at least gives us that indication of where things are headed. And typically, we like to say the governor's budget is the floor and from there the budget gets built. It's hard to say this time around how that's going to go. What we do know is that the Department of Administrative Services or DAS presented or sent over to the governor's office. An initial starting K twelve budget of nine point five billion, which is only two hundred million more than. What was allocated for the twenty one, twenty three biennial and that represents only a two point two percent increase. What we have calculated that we would need as a district to maintain our actual service level that we are providing currently. Would be an allocation of ten point two billion. So that's a discrepancy of seven hundred million. And even just breaking it down some different ways, and certainly I can let Michelle speak to this because she is the one who kind of did the calculation. Calculations and crunch the numbers. If you look at what, what is ten point two? So that would be about a nine point seven percent increase over the allocation from twenty one, twenty three. Which if you kind of break it down, it really doesn't seem all that crazy because. So you know, you think about a biennial budget allocation, it's an amount, right? So that covers two years. So if each of the years is kind of covered by this allocation. Like you figure you already know what the costs are for that first year, but then the second year, well, a little over three percent, three point two percent inflation. That's going to happen between year one, year two, and then, you know, then you have the other two years of the biennial that you're planning for now. So thinking that that would go up, a cumulative total of nine point seven is not out of the realm of reason. And when you consider that we're expecting a six point nine percent increase in employer rates to furs and that's at a statewide level. That's not just, that's not just for us, but that's something that all districts in the state will probably be looking at. Then, you know, that doesn't even take into account salary increases necessarily that have been bargained by the various districts across the state. That alone would necessitate a seven percent increase in the biennial allocation. Another way to break it down is to say, okay, we understand that there are fewer students in the K twelve system statewide. However, it's a bit unrealistic to think that we could do, you know, our job with less money per student. Which is kind of the way it's starting to shape up right now. I mean, if, if nothing changed with, with the DAS here at the governor's office. If you look at what we currently get per student as just that base funding that doesn't take into account if you're a language learner. Or somebody who needs special services or anything like that, it's about nine thousand five hundred dollars a year. And to get to that same level, even just that same per student level would take a, would take a statewide allocation. Of about nine point six five billion dollars. So they're just way, way off kind of, no matter how you look at it. And so I've outlined some of those things on the sheet that I gave you that is, it's definitely a draft. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I just thought it might be helpful to look at, start looking at things this way. Cause this is kind of how we've organized these, these talking sheets in the past. So it at least gives us something to, you know, a place to start from and, and make changes to. But one thing I was thinking is we might want to just kind of state some of those top line challenges right, right from the get go. And help people understand that, you know, we're still struggling as, as Audrey and Travis just talked about. To, to get students, you know, to kind of catch them up from all of the impacts they've had over these last few years. And it's not just, oh, but we said the pandemic was over, so now everything's fine again. You know, there are some long-term impacts. One of the ways that we have, you know, thankfully been able to try to address that this year is. If you look back historically at the last like quote unquote normal year where we talked about what we had intended our staffing ratios to be. You know, which was like twenty four to one in kindergarten, twenty six to one at one two, twenty eight to one, three to six. And then thirty one to one beyond that type thing. Well, we actually currently have tried to staff our grades one through three. Lower even than our kinders because those kids had a pretty significant pandemic impact. They were supposed to be in school and were significantly disrupted. And now they're in these grade levels where a lot more is expected of them. So we've tried to kind of keep those grade levels held a bit lower. Whereas, you know, it's just this year coming into kinder, you know, haven't, haven't had that same level of impact. So it's just very interesting to look at how we, how we've tried to really take care of our students as they come back in. And which, you know, contributes to how we're looking at what our actual service level would be moving forward. And while not every district has done these, the calculation for themselves yet. I think early indications are that we're right in the ballpark of other big school districts. And that's even without us having a local option levy to rely on like our neighbors Beaverton have and some of our other. Districts in the region. Yeah, well, you know, you have to renew those, so who knows? They historically had one, so. And but yeah, so I just, like I said, kind of took a stab at, at outlining some of these key challenges. Being pandemic impacts both for our students and for staffing. You know, while, while it may be true that we've got most of our like teaching positions filled, we don't have a bench. We don't have, to use a sports metaphor, metaphor, we do not have a deep bench right now. And when we have absences, there are not always subs to fill those positions. I mean, just don't have that strength of team behind us that we really need. And when it comes to our classified staff, we've discussed those shortages as well. And those are, those are really significant, plus our need to significantly diversify the workforce. So we definitely have workforce readiness challenges in addition to, you know, just the things that we need and want. And are really quite frankly obligated to do for our students. So the majority of where I focused is, you know, funding. That is, that's a pretty reasonable place for us to be spending a lot of our time and energy. And certainly it's not, it's not the only thing important to us. There are other things around, you know, unfunded mandates. We've come up with creative ways to say that over the years. And this year, the way I phrased it, at least right now, is that ensure that any of the legislation that requires us to do more. Comes with the necessary funding and or supports to get it done. I, I believe we spoke about last time, a, a piece of special education legislation that we're expecting. That could just have an absolutely significant impact on how we do business for our students with special needs. So it's those types of things where it's like, it might sound, it's kind of like reading your voter's pamphlet, right? Like you kind of read the short description, it's like, well, that sounds reasonable, but then you really dig into, well, what does this mean in practical terms? And there's all these either unintended consequences or, or, or needs that aren't sufficiently considered. You know, that then have quite a big impact on us and how we're expected to do business. So that's always a place for us to watch out when it comes to education related bills. Like what is the time that's going to be needed to get this done, the personnel and the cost, other things like that, so.
For reference, we had a meeting of some of the local LBC members this week. And the special education bill that you're referencing has some pretty dramatic possible consequences apparently. Such as loss of licensure for administrators and very dramatic budgetary impacts. If you don't meet some requirements, which were possible to be there. So that is one to keep an eye on.
Good question on the gathering, this is gather workforce data. Do we have that on there already of like? But Trish and open, et cetera. We can have some of that data, you don't have this turn out. I'm just thinking how do we tell that workforce piece?
I feel like for us, the workforce story might be a little more on the, on the hiring side. Than on the people leaving us side. And that's, I, I don't want to speak for Connor, but I don't feel like we've had. As much trouble with people necessarily like jumping ship as we have with this industry.
Hard to get people in the door. And it was, that's the saying that other districts are struggling in entry into the profession. How can we kind of collaborate on that?
And I think, I, I think we can certainly share like the various pipeline programs that we have, how many people are doing it, that, that kind of thing. Open positions, maybe even partnerships. So I, I think we can put together, you know, some great talking points around kind of the needs and then our efforts behind them. To help tell the story. I think we can sort of like come into that with like higher ed.
I'm wondering if they're like, is there more people going for degrees or? How do we tell like this is the trending kind of, the trending data?
The trending data is, is certainly a lot less folks going into education. And so you're even seeing programs closed by the barrel first and, and Cordia. The metro area. And so there isn't the same number of folks that are going into that. But also we're working with the state or ODE to try to find pathways for folks that want to go into education. And how do their educational assistance experience account for some of that? Is that will help to pray foster them financially? That's the biggest regret that we're seeing for folks.
With subs coming up a couple of times, I know we have building sub everywhere, maybe two in high school. But with primarily us using a contract agency for subs, how do we frame that discussion in a way? That makes it relevant to play. So we're paying the company to provide them and they can't provide them. Like how do we, how do we tell that story?
Honestly, I, I feel like, I don't know that I would separate us in that sense. I feel like in this ballpark, we're all a team, you know, the district and the, and the subservice provider, we're all looking for good staff. It's just for some people, being a sub just fits a little bit more what they need and what they're looking for. But I think it's a collective issue and we are trying to approach it as a, as a team and a partnership. So I guess that would be my, my perspective on it is that we present it as it's a problem for all of us. The districts, the sub providers, like we just need to find and, and prepare more people to enter the profession.
So we have negotiated with our substitute provider, different things to kind of remove barriers. To entry into being a substitute, which is a lot of times it's like free work. There, we're bound by contract to hire them, but they work in a position after a certain amount of time anyway. So they're, in, in a sense, they're working to kind of be a pipeline for us, which is why they're also short. So, and we do a lot of collaborative communication around improvement with them. There's also very specific bonus programs in place for subs to fill those extra hard days. You know, Fridays are, are a challenge. So we, we have negotiated some very specific in tandem items to help get subs.
And I imagine that probably it's challenging for us given in a, you know, larger district. But like this information from Northwest Regional, the smaller districts are more rural.
This is a legislative priorities part by way, I just see one of our union partners that we work with, great. Wonder if considering bringing more on staff makes sense, but it's not a legislative party, it just makes me wonder.
I think overall, there's going to be, I think we have to. As Travis said earlier, manage our expectation. There's going to be a lot of uncertainty until this election is done. And I, as I am often saying, if I day job, we are going to do the same thing. We have no idea what's coming our way. And we don't know, I don't know that education doesn't hold on. It's, it's, it's just a tough day to be, and we may not know until February. And it could be really bad. I just, not to be a dead down or anything like that, I just think we have to have very, very realistic expectations. And unfortunately, to be forewarned is to be warned. And I think we all know what could potentially be coming and we have to consider. We have to, it, it's going to need some really tough decisions.
Yeah, if the budget shortfall is in line with the revenue forecast. It would be great. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's two thousand and three, but it's. Twenty ten, yeah. And, and, you know, the, the document is clearly important, but what I sort of emphasized in my opinion. The document is supplementary to our action that the advocates for our student sale. So this is, is a piece of paper, maybe behind to summarize the conversations that we have with legislators over there with this. We, like you said, we don't have a lobbyist on staff here. I think David's doing a great job for the region and we're members of Northwest Region ESD, so it's great that he's advocating for everybody in that. But you know, we, we need to be prepared to go with our partners on the, you know, designated lobby day and on other days during sessions. So that's, you know, sometime between January and, and when it can have an impact, mid-April, by the time. End of April comes around, the cement is getting pretty hard. So the session will continue until June, but not much more is getting changed after May first, but just. It's supposed to be a hard time to discuss this, so are we comfortable with what Ben has here in the drafts? Does anybody want to make any general changes or concerns about any of this stuff or say, yeah, I like it or I hate it?
The, the only thing I could, I could, the only thing that came up to me, and it's something that. That I have struggled to understand the concept of, and I'm like, well, if I'm struggling, then I have no doubt somebody else. And what it is, is understanding exactly what the current service level is. The reason why I say that is because when, if I put on my parent hat. Whatever the current service level is, isn't enough because the recipient of that has changed dramatically. So if the recipient changes, the need changes. So I'm, I just, I'm very concerned that I've heard this, the acronym, get their own analog. Can I get it? But unless someone is able to articulate and to, to either articulate or visualize. However, you want to do it, exactly what current service level is and how far, how far short it falls. For the current and newly traumatized recipient, right? Is that, I'm, I'm trying to say it in a nice way, but I, I really don't think that if we keep talking about CSL. They're not going to get it. They need to understand what the current service level is and then where our traumatized children are. Oh, and the traumatized staff. So if we add that traumatized staff, traumatized children, current service level. Oh, and the traumatized staff, so if we add that traumatized staff, traumatized children, current service level, those three all go together.
Yeah, so, um, I've always found it useful to think about current service level. Because people need a way to frame, it's such a large amount of money that you're talking about, it's a way to make it feel real. And so current service level or actual service level would be, what would it take to do tomorrow exactly what we're doing today? Keeping in, in mind the realities of tomorrow, which are the fact that our costs are going to go up, you know, three to five or more percent for. Fuel and food and salaries and whatnot, right, so it's like. If I have ten teachers in this school today, what would it take for me to have ten teachers in this school tomorrow, that's kind of like. That's what that's intended to convey, just so you kind of set the stage with people that like, when we ask for this, to you, you say. Hey, that's nine point seven percent more money than you had the last few years, and it's like, yeah. But that's what we need to do, not even anything better, but to do the same things that we're doing now. In this future state, so it's kind of a way to say, it's not that we're moonshotting you. It's we're telling you just to not change anything, what would it take to keep this going? And that's this, and then you kind of pile on these things and, and now let's consider. The additional needs of these kids that are highly traumatized or have, you know, fallen behind as a result of. Distance learning or, or, you know, whatever else, so it's not intended to tell the whole story, but it seems to be a pretty useful. Way to frame at least the starting conversation.
And it's a Mark's point, so like, if this is a leave behind, we have a conversation, I think. And I feel like maybe thinking about giving some graphics that are, if you think of a better way to illustrate, like you were just doing with your hands, but. I'd do a lot of, like, but actually having something that when they see this back. You know, they, they can visually see this is twenty twenty three, what we're doing next year, or even like, this is what happened last year, but something that. Can kind of be a visual, I mean, so this is really.
Yeah, it's, it's dense, for sure, yeah.
And when we need to solidify this, the November meeting has been.
You know what we've done in many years is we don't even take it to first reading until December, and then we just. Kind of like what we did earlier with an action item in the work session is we acted on it at our January work session. So that it could be ready before the session started, and we can totally do that, um, but I was just thinking, you know. If we're pretty solid on this, and I still have, you know, a few weeks before the November meeting, that. Maybe I could go ahead and get one ready and put on first reading for you guys, that would still give you the time in between then and the December meeting to make any tweaks, and then you could adopt in December and we'd have it.
So I like the idea of bringing it home, sort of like, this is the impact on us, to the ten teachers in the building analogy is very good, so, you know, if it. If you fund us at this level, it means fifty-two less teachers in Hillsborough or twenty-five less teachers in Hillsborough, whatever it means, right, like, if you fund us at this level. You don't want to, if we don't backfill from the SIA, this is what we have traditionally done, we've chosen not to lay people off, we've chosen to. Continue providing what we did today tomorrow by using some of our SIA dollars to backfill, but I, I like. Something graphical, right, like, to your point, but something grab saying. Right, our average building, our average elementary school has, I guess we'll have, they're very, very different size, but pick a few or whatever. You know, Tom Elementary, I don't know how many teachers are correctly, pick one, right, say forty-five, sixty is a hundred, I don't, I guess I don't even know, but. And if, if you fund us at this level. But so what, what I, what I don't want to do is get ahead of ourselves and say, what, nine point five, right, like. We're conceding the nine point five plus. Right, like, uh, so I, I'm wondering like how far down the line can we kick the can to figure out what's the number that we're sort of coalescing around, where we can say. You know, it, don't the concrete to be set, but you know, maybe. The trucks pulled up and some of it's hitting the form, right, like, you have an idea of where we're at it, I, I like.
Average for the, we want to use SIA funds the way they were intended to be used.
We've made that argument a lot of times, I, I think we will continue to do that. But yeah, like, I, I like the idea of saying, the general fund should provide our actual service level, which means, which is this. And if you don't, that means we have a hundred sixty-two less teachers in our building, whatever the number is. And, and, you know, get everybody involved, and forty-two less bus routes, and what, like, I, I, I like the idea of bringing it home. For what underfunding us means for us.
And, and still telling. The trauma of the children, but even in that, we're still going to tell the story, you tell the story of this. I know if this is rich and we got it new, so you're there, we just got to. Bring it home, but I, I just feel not, I feel not comfortable. Without them understanding that the current service level, you can't even think about that, because our client isn't the same. Our client has changed, the children have changed, everything changed, so. It kind of, I, I don't know, I just.
Kind of weighted ties, but the temporary S R funds that were supposed to accommodate for that change are not, they're, they'll, they'll, it's actually going to last longer than the money. Sorry, when he gets something on there.
That's okay, I think you really hit it, hit the nail on the head, so take this, you mentioned what I was thinking about, and taking this a step further is to show in this story that we tell. What the real life impacted to the student, this is what the student is missing because we can't do X, Y, and Z. So just, just to take it one step further and say, this is the real impact for our students.
So maybe, maybe like, you know, create the format and leave the actual numbers blank, if we have more concrete board or whatever. Really hammer the heck out of that. But like, like, get an idea of what it kind of looks like, and nine point five, and then seven, whatever, it's got to be less than what we are actual service level. It doesn't need to go in the document, but I would love to be able to. Uh, speak authoritatively and well informed on why we need more money when we have two hundred fewer students.
Exactly, and I feel like the, the leave behind that we leave behind for them and be more visual, this is, this is good information for us as for us. To like digest them.
Yeah, I, I, you kind of want maybe two versions, one that's for you guys and one that's to leave.
Like a Hypno, so we can have, to make sure that we're not being inaccurate when we make our claims with legislators on it.
Sorry, and. If, if you think in terms of, of showing them, because oh, by the way, I think there's somewhat godly number of new people that are going to be voted in. So yeah, at that end, these people are deaf, they have no clue, they don't. And they're about to come in and we're about to ask them a really big question, and they're not going to know. So we got to tell them at current service level for those same ten teachers, what's the story, and then if we don't get. What we're asking for, I don't know, let's just say we're not ten billion, if we don't get ten million. If you don't at least give us the nine point seven, then it'll go back to what it is, and they visually have to see that traumatized children are going to be further traumatized.
We think ten point two is our actual. Q E M is ten point eight or eleven.
I think it's eleven.
Yeah, Q E M is eleven.
Yeah.
So does Q E M mean their best number should be at?
Quality education model, the experts research what it, what the overall number should be to educate students in Oregon appropriately, instead it was eleven. Million dollar statewide, and. I don't know whether State or Report saying why they couldn't do that.
I do want to advocate that like, if we're asking whatever we're asking, that we're saying that. I don't want to think of us using SIA funds to backfill, like, I want to, we're shooting, we've been shooting for this target all the time, why not keep doing the same, you know, like.
So you'd rather have a figure that accounts for pulling all that support out of S A.
And general fund being, if you're going to call it current service level, what is our act? What you, what they call current service level should mean our actual service level.
Yeah, and then, and then.
And the SIA fund should be targeted investments, the thing is, to make this point with so many new people. A lot of the people who pass the Student Success Act are not there, so when we say in a legislator's office who's new. The intent of this legislation, you intend to do this, well, they didn't, go ahead, right?
And I think, I do think that the visual to, um. When he's point should be centered more around the impact of the student, instead of like. Yeah, like ten, ten less teachers, but like, what does that mean to the student, that means that the student is in a class of this many. Or that the student is, we don't have bus driving for after school activity, like, what is that, what does that look like for them?
I just still like your graph of showing, maybe just for us, how, you know, at this number. That two-thirds, yes, like the, of the SIA has to go just straight to back though, we can't use it for targets, unless you're going to lay everybody up, like, thoughts on, and work on, yeah.
Um, the timeline wise, getting this kind of done, we are working with our regional. L P C, um, for our area legislative policy or O S B A. The convenient meeting sometime next year and invite all of our legislators, legislators for our area, or possibly. Hold it in Salem and us go there so that they can easily come meet us, but we're still figuring out the logistics, but this will be a great. Piece of information that will go with us advocating.
Well, and for the new people and whatever she, I think she tended, one, one of the first ones, it would be, you'd be for years. The whole region, all Washington County, held a legislative summit in January, right, the outside legislative session, some legislators came, some didn't, we had some that were very reliable with them, these. Penitent dinner at the Northwest Region L S D, by that direction, again, um, pen in the Northwest Region L S D and. You, you know, the idea was always have student presentations, so, you know, you guys be on your game, uh, so all, the, the highlight of the night is always. Them hearing from students directly, and what, you know, the year after Student Success Act passed, it was. Uh, was we had our students say how those targeted ones were going to make a difference in their education was awesome. And that was the highlight, it could, we give a lot, the legislators an opportunity to talk about their agenda for the session, you know, so they get. A few minutes to, to, to tell us what their priorities are for the session and unrelated, it's, it's a sort of a two-way dialogue, so. Look for that in January, again, we're not sure if we'll be doing that in Salem or up here. But yes, uh, last, we did not do a last year in perspective, the previous one was pandemic, height of pandemic, it was all virtual. Very well attended, and there were several new legislators that had that one too.
But thank you for this, this is, is, yeah, this is an awesome start, because otherwise we wouldn't have been able to articulate or have this conversation.
An interesting thing to note is the next orderly revenue forecast happens the day after your next meeting, it'll be on November sixteenth. So if there's, um, significant change in that, I mean, that's certainly if we have anything that references that forecast. In the final version of this document, that can easily be just tweaked to update the actual numbers, um, in time for the December, so that's. How we look forward.
With the John Beat of recessions coming, I wouldn't expect it to be better.
Yeah, it's interesting, it's, it's like four and a half billion dollars more than what they estimated, but unfortunately, that just means a gigantic.
History, yeah, a huge budget shortfall is going to have to be. Anything else on our legislative agenda, it's a good conversation, thank you, everybody, and. Be ready to get on the bus. Hopefully our, our partners will be able to go down there and get it together. Uh, next item is just a pre discussion on the donation acknowledgements. Um, we've been, we sort of brought it up at the last, uh, full session. Full session, right, right, that money might want to make some changes, do you want to sort of cover any of that, do you want to set the ground here all, or just do we have to sit? So as far as I understand it, we have to accept the donations officially, because that's the law. For years, they were just in everything, all of them were just in the consent agenda. Last four, last four or so, any over five thousand we pulled out, I just made note of in the meeting, several. About, right?
Yes, that's better practice.
Okay, so let's wait, so that's what we're, that's what we would do tonight. And we would continue that unless we change them. So is there an appetite to change that, or is it? Go around the room or whatever?
So Mark, you mentioned if this is required somewhere or by law that we have to do this vote, you know.
Not, not the specific acknowledgement action item that we do, but yes, we have to, uh, we have to acknowledge. The, all of the donations for district, five thousand and below and five thousand above, and. All the ones below five thousand are just contained in the consent agenda and not called out specifically, we as a board have chosen recently. To call out ones over five thousand, because, you know, say extra, thanks, make note of it.
Okay, so it's, it's an H S D policy, it's not a state law thing.
To have to accept them, no, that, that's a state law, to call out the ones over five thousand dollars, then they just be, they just decided. So I, I suppose the options are continue to do what we're doing or return them to, return all of them to consent agenda. Feels like, unless there's an option C, I don't understand maybe what, feels like to me, there's probably two options, continue what we're doing. Or return the consent agenda, is that essentially what we legally compliance show?
Yeah, we can also alter the timeline of presentation, so maybe it's biannually or annually, contribution on everything, like even over five thousand dollars or. Some type of different report, I mean, we can highlight them anyway, um, we've just been doing that, that's the most timely way to acknowledge those, those larger gifts. But it's, it's really at the preference of the board in terms of how they want to receive or discuss that, so. The acceptance is, is equal to approval in terms of the rules that we have to abide. So that, you know, Title Nine, if it's for sports program, Title Nine, you're using to see, you know, that we're compliant and how we administer these funds and. So that there are some reason for that structure for acceptance and approval that's required, but that extra acknowledgement that we've been doing, that's really, you know, adequate.
Yeah, I mean, my whole thing about this was, I'm just wondering why the board is voting to approve, it's already, it's already been accepted, sometimes it's probably even spent before. You know, just the timeline of when it gets shown, it shows up at the board, so I'm wondering, that, that's what circulated in my mind of why are we doing this?
I mean, would it be helpful if we just changed the words we use there?
If we did, yeah, we did change it, we did, it's not approved anymore to know, that's right.
Right. And the consent agenda, it's accept or in between, and in the, um, as an item, it's in a separate report and it's the knowledge. So.
Yeah, so I think the motion now is I acknowledge. I moved it to board, I just acknowledged these donations, but we call, I don't say that we approve, because we've already proved that's why I can't send them.
I think so, I think that so long as we know that there are designated organizations whose sole focus and sole goal is doing exactly that. They raise money and they give it right up to the schools, they raise money, they give it right back to the band, they raise money, they give it right back to the sports. That's their goal, that's going to happen like a gazillion times, preferably a year, until we get more money, so that they don't have to do it. But apparently that's not going to happen, so I guess in my saying that, um, is that because we know this is going to happen over and over and over again. And they're getting better and raising money, so the idea that they might dump ten thousand dollars, a, a P T O might dump ten thousand dollars to the library. Or a PAC might raise ten thousand dollars to give to a school, that, that's our reality, and this is going to keep happening.
I haven't noticed an increase in the number, right, maybe are you in better, but I think it's two or three?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a lot, but it's just, it's going to keep happening because they have to, I mean, for the very reason.
Right, lots more thousand dollars, a lot more thousand dollars, they're just, those are part of the consent agenda.
Cause that was the other thing.
And we appreciate those just as much, we just don't.
That was the other thing I was going to ask you, do you have a problem with the fact that we don't talk about the ones that come in that are under five thousand?
No, I, my, my big thing was, I'm just wondering why you're voting to, taking the time to, you know, I don't have a problem with acknowledging it, you know, I, in my mind, I'm thinking, why don't we do just a little statement? From the board, like we do proclamations, of we thank whoever for this donation that will help X, Y, and Z. And that, I'm just, I'm just wondering why we're taking the time to vote, that's all, that's, that was.
Let's just provide, so I'm comfortable continuing to do it the way we're doing it, but just to provide like a little bit of natural acknowledgement, we'll go the extra effort, so that's. So I'm willing to, I don't think our board needs to go exceptionally long, so I'm, I'm comfortable taking the time to. Call out those members of the community for their gratitude, sure, yeah, we don't have to do it that way.
We'll find, either way, I would just, that was my question, just why we were doing that.
Yeah, so, um, make sure I understand. Um, I read the linked policy KH, and so it's the case, it's our understanding that state law is that every donation has to be individually acted on by the board. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's cool.
But that can be.
Policy KH is just, is actually reflecting that statistic. So, um, our practice is to itemize every donation of any value in this, so something consent agenda, which we do vote to accept, and then separately list under a different board motion, donations over a certain threshold. Yeah, I, I would have an opposition since we've all, since we're voting twice, the exact same thing, I wouldn't have any opposition to not having a second vote, instead doing something where we just list substantial donations as we do, that's sort of like a proclamation and just thank people for it. But I don't see if your needs about twice the same thing. I'm happy to do it either way also.
Yeah, what do you think? Could we include that in this kind of thing? I should ask Michelle before then. Good, we just included in the financial report as part of that, and you can just list the major donations that have been made and the board could say thank you.
Yeah, actually, that would be my favorite.
Well, okay, so wait, go back for just a moment.
It was her favorite.
Stay away back. Um, we have to, we have to acknowledge them all anyway.
And they're in the consent agenda.
No, 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 in your financial report. If we get audited, you have to account for all of that. Every donation, no matter how large and how small. So we already have a list.
Right, we're just trying to draw some recognition to the building.
So, and we can do it through the.
Yeah, the regular financial report.
The regular financial report that you do every other, every, every time, almost.
So you'll have all of them in the consent agenda regardless, but you're saying where you're gonna recognize the big donors now is gonna be embedded in the financial report, not a separate acknowledgement.
Yeah.
So after regular meeting, you just enumerate, so part of the financial report. And this would be.
Yes.
Would have to put a policy on for, cause it's now in policy that we call out, right? Practice, we've been doing it, practice.
One week part of it is required is the voting marks that we're doing in the, yeah, so now we're doing without that.
Oh, it's just like a thing we've been doing, it wasn't like a policy.
Because we want to recognize the under donations.
It's really mapped up. It's easier than that. It's easier.
So technically, we don't have to vote, right?
To, to make the change.
Oh, yeah, right, to make the change.
Yeah, to change what we're currently doing, we don't need to vote, we just sort of need to like all agree that this is what we're gonna do now.
Yes.
Yeah, we choose to not acknowledge, well, I still like the idea of acknowledging those larger donations. It's a, I, I am definitely grateful for all of the donations to the district. I feel like it's okay to give a little extra shout out to the board, organization that I want to be able to clap on.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I definitely think the bottom line is that we are really very thankful for these wonderful contributions. As we spend so much time talking about the resources to which we had and that we're gonna advocate for. I hear people are, it's been exciting to bring us more resources, so why don't you do everything we can to encourage that and thank people for that. Uh, but, but doing so in a streamlined way that we can always see exactly where it's gonna happen. And we know if there's nothing in the financial report, there's nothing needed, think about thank you before that much above and beyond. If there is, then we know, if there's something I should have in my mind, if I see that school situation present, I can say, hey, thanks for what you did.
There are none today, right?
None.
All right, so we can, we can target November being the first time we do this?
Yeah.
Sort of head nods, uh, she in, I don't wanna gloss over any input you have, I can see sort of heads nodding around the table.
Yep, nodding my head as well. Sounds good.
All right, uh, fifty-two, uh, anything else for the good order, Connor, maybe something to share with us?
I received an email today from HCU, so they have, uh, determined that they will have an information session on November first. And then they will vote, uh, for the transportation dollars scheduled on November second. I hope that we will be able to come on November fifteenth or four to go.
And if that all goes through, then it's reflected in their December page.
Yes.
Anybody have anything else? We'll return our work session and you can be downstairs, you know, sort of quickly as we can.
I will call the meeting of, the regular meeting of the Hillsborough School District one J to order. We'll begin as we always do with the flag salute, flag is right here behind.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united not, we need a reasonable liberty and checks for all.
So my, oh, landing. The landing acknowledgement. You got it? As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atfalahti indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on. The Tualatin Kalapuya, Kahlamit, Clackamas, Tomwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. In remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native first peoples communities living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. Thank you. All right, proclamations and, I'm first. The Hillsborough School District knows that during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous peoples and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as intricately woven into the history of this community and country. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that Native Americans are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States. The Hillsborough School District honors Native Americans who have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through their generosity of culture and the continued practice of teaching, economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. The Hillsborough School District is committed to engaging in dialogues led by tribal communities around the opportunities and work in which they are currently engaged in the areas of self-determination, sovereignty, and cultural preservation. The Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District hereby proclaim the month of November twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two to be Native American Heritage Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the Native American Heritage Month. Uh, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that public schools provide young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's values of freedom, civility, and equality. The Hillsborough School District knows that by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that education employees, licensed, classified, and technical support staff and administrators work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. The Hillsborough School District encourages all community members to extend their commitment to public education and to the future of our children by supporting our community schools through the contribution of time and energy. The Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of November thirteenth and nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, be American Education Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing American Education Week. Thank you.
And our final proclamation, uh, is she in online, thank you.
Hillsborough School District recognizes that education support professionals are essential partners to the education process. The Hillsborough School District knows that education support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students. The Hillsborough School District appreciates that education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. The Hillsborough School District honors the invaluable and often unsung work behind the scenes, supportive teachers in delivering instruction, diverse talents, and tireless dedication to our community students. The Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim that November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, be National Education Support Professionals Day. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing all education support professionals for their valued contributions to the Hillsborough School District. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Has been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as printed. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, is there any opposition? The motion carries. Would anybody like to move to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Uh, has been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Thomas that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, um, modify the agenda and, and remove, uh, two policies.
And those would be?
Uh, BCF and DBEA.
All right. Thank you. Uh, as a reminder, the consent agenda is intended to advance, uh, items about which there needs to be no further conversation. Um, and a, any director can pull an item from the consent agenda at any time. So, uh, we will remove those items from the consent agenda. And Rose, should we modify the agenda first or approve the remaining consent agenda then modify? Okay. Director Lopez, could you modify your motion, uh, for the consent agenda?
Do you want me to?
Uh, or rescind the motion or modify to, uh, approve the consent agenda without those two items? Yeah, as amended, okay.
I'll just redo my motion.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? The remaining consent agenda is approved. All right, um, I move that we modify tonight's agenda to include taking action, uh, as item. Uh, G four and five, the consideration of policies BCF and DBEA.
What was your motion?
To, uh, to amend our agenda to include a separate, to include action items in section three, our action item section, or section G, our action item section, to include a fourth item. Would be taking action on policy BCF and a fifth item to include, uh, addressing policy DBEA.
I second.
All right, I have moved to amend the agenda and it's been seconded by Director Lopez. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection? All right, that motion carries. Next up, uh, audience time. Do we have any audience time tonight? All right. I don't get to read the thing. All right, so, uh, section G, our action items, uh, I'll just kick it off with the motion. Um, I move that the Board of Directors appoint the following two candidates, can't, start again. I move that the Board of Directors appoint the following candidates to two-year positions. Position one, Jennifer Bell. Position three, Heather Welch. Position, student position, Hazren Edwards.
Second.
I have moved and it's been seconded by Director Ward that we appoint the following candidates to your positions. Jennifer Bell, position one, position three, Heather Welch, student position, Hazren Edwards. Is there any further discussion?
Just wanna thank our applicants and, um, ensure that we continue our efforts to promote our opportunity. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, I just appreciate it if, and whether it's Travis or whoever else reaches out to the folks left and know they've been appointed. If you make it clear, the board personally thanks them for their time and service.
Yeah, and I too would like to thank the members of the community stepping forward to serve on the committee. It's important that we have, um, you know, these obligated committees filled. And, um, just a reminder to any community still watching, uh, with us out there that there are five more positions available, Travis, is that about right? Five more openings. So, um, the board is open to considering further applicants for the CCAC as they become available. Rose, can you please call the roll on the motion? Oh.
She and Kim.
Hi.
Erica Lopez.
Hi.
Patrick McGuire.
Hi.
Monique Ward.
Hi.
Nancy Thomas.
Hi.
Mark Watson.
Hi, motion carries. Thank you, folks, and, uh, we look forward to working with you going forward. Uh, facilities naming process, did Adam just leave us? Did he just like bail? He, he did his work upstairs and he's gone. Casey, do you have any, uh, information you'd like to share with us on this front?
Uh, nothing of, no, just, uh, no, uh, at the last board meeting, the board voted to, uh, move Tammerack as a loan finalist for ES twenty-nine. I have received, uh, no input or feedback since then, so looking for a board vote to finalize the name of ES twenty-nine.
Anybody like to make motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve its selection of Tammerack as the name for ES twenty-nine currently being constructed in Hillsborough.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Kim and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve its selection of Tammerack as the name for ES twenty-nine currently being constructed in South Hillsborough. Is there any further discussion? Just want to again thank the community for their input on this process. It was pretty clear, um, that this was the most favored name and, uh, real happy to get on board. Is any possi, is there any possibility of making Director Kim louder in our room or, okay, thank you. Um, any other comments? We discussed this quite a bit last time. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
She and Kim.
Hi.
Erica Lopez.
Hi.
Patrick McGuire.
Hi.
Monique Ward.
Hi.
Nancy Thomas.
Hi.
Mark Watson.
Hi, motion carries. Welcome aboard Tammerack Elementary. And thank you, Casey, for your work on this. Uh, our next action item is, uh, adoption of appropriations budget resolution. Michelle, would you like to add some context?
Um, thank you, Chair Watson. I would just like to state that there in June, when we were making our budget resolutions for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, one of them had a coding error. So this appropriation of this resolution change doesn't show any impact to dollar amounts, just the. Doesn't show any impact to dollar amounts, just the way that they are coded um, for the Oregon Department of Education requirements, so. That is the situation.
Somebody have any questions for Michelle?
No, but I'd like to move that the Board of Directors approve the revised resolution. Make budget appropriation for the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget. Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve the revised resolution to make budget appropriations. For the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget. Is there any further discussion? Just the kind of thing, so was this caught by our audit committee or how did we become aware of the error?
We report in paper form or our PDF budget document and electronic. Um, data to the department and as we were doing that, we recognized that there was a coding issue. And so in order to reconcile at that level, we needed to come forward again and have this change made.
Okay, so you thought it before, didn't you?
Yes.
Uh, this is now, oh wait, well. So we're talking about having to amend the budget. Uh, recently, there's been some press regarding a neighboring district that's had some budgetary issues. They had clean bills of health and other audits. They had um, a number of. Uh, clear, i- it seemed to them that there would be no budgetary, uh, what? What kind of assurances do we have that we don't have a surprise two million dollar budget shortfall?
Well, Chair Watson, uh, every month I provide a pretty comprehensive cash flow report uh, to the board that includes. Um, preliminary and then actual fund balances and you can see in real time. How our district is spending and receiving revenues compared to prior year. Um, I haven't had the opportunity to review the other districts' financial reporting to see. You know, where perhaps there were some weaknesses. I know that there have been questions around um, the audit and how that wasn't. Um, readily shared during the financial report component. All districts are subject to. And I can share that our auditors are coming in to test our financial controls. To make sure that we're spending according to policy. They don't necessarily um, provide a performance audit for districts, so. Although the information may be there, it may not be clear to administrators or to folks who aren't. Familiar with financial reporting to see where there may be areas of um. Impact down the road, so. We work hard to look ahead and really stay on top of where we're at in our current spending to ensure that you guys have a good understanding of our financial position.
So, Dan Mike?
Yeah, I would, I would say the other thing that uh, this conversation came up in Washington County Superintendent's this week is what, or last week as well. And I think the financial report that Michelle does on a monthly basis. Is more comprehensive than you'll see in a lot of districts and um, provides more of that bottom line book on a regular basis.
Um, well, that was, you answered my question. My question was, do we know? I know what you do for us and do we know what happened in the other situation before I, you know, run and say the sky is falling or we potentially haven't done, done something right. From what I could see on a monthly basis, we had enough information that we would know by now if we were. Two million off somewhere. Um, so um. I don't know.
Yeah, the other indicator would be the financial report. I mean, any areas of material weakness. I mean, that would be shared with you and it should have been shared with. Um, their leadership as well. I, I don't know exactly.
Yeah.
You know, what happened in that period, but we do have a series of things that actually take. Several weeks to make sure that we have, we know where we landed on the fiscal year before we bring that report to you guys. Um, including making sure that we don't have funds running in the negative. Um, and I think that's a probably a big um. Step that was missed in that district.
If, would it be appropriate for us to? Well. What I was thinking was, would it be appropriate for us to invite the public if they had a question that they could submit it via email and I thought about it, they have the right to do that anyway.
Certainly.
Having said that, so um. To the public that might be watching this, if you have a problem or if you have a concern with regard to our budget. And how it's reported, you can always go on the website and and access any of the reports because all of them are there. Um, and then if you have additional questions, you can then follow up directly via email. With our Chief Financial Officer, um, and any citizen of our area is empowered to do that. So I just encourage that. It's a shame that they experienced that, but. That's why I like her.
Thank you, Director Watson. We also have four budget committee vacancies, so I'm going to put a plug in. Uh, do appreciate your support and if there are areas of concern, I mean, we definitely want to look at that. We um. Made an extra effort to engage another independent auditor to review our bond program every year and that's. Um, voluntary because we wanted the community to feel uh, extra assured at our um, implementation of that program.
Out of curiosity, since one of your, one of the budget committee members is now our Washington County Auditor. Did she give up her position with us? She did not.
Yeah, not a conflict.
Awesome.
Auditor-elect, I think.
Oh, I think that's, yeah. Probably the first of the year.
Is it still auditor-elect?
Yeah.
Is it first of the year? I apologize. I thought she took over.
I think there would have been a runoff in November, but there would have been.
Okay. I stand happily corrected, auditor-elect, but you know who I'm talking about, Michelle, right? Okay.
Rose, can you please, is there any other discussion? Rose, can you please call the roll on the motion?
Kim?
Hi.
Erica Lopez.
Hi.
Patrick McGuire.
Hi.
Monique Ward.
Hi.
Nancy Thomas.
Hi.
Mark Watson.
Hi. Motion carries. Uh, based on the amended agenda, I move that the Board of Directors approve policy BCF advisory committees to the board. As indicated uh, last session and has been on review.
Second.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors approve policy BCF advisory committees to the board as presented. In our packet and on thirty-day review. Is there any further discussion? Nothing. Uh, looking at it, I had a minute ago. Yeah. All right, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
She and Kim.
Hi.
Erica Lopez.
Hi.
Patrick McGuire.
Hi.
Monique Ward.
Opposed.
Nancy Thomas.
Hi.
Mark Watson.
Hi. Motion carries. I move that the Board of Directors approve policy DBA budget committees. Budget Committee as presented in our packet and has been on thirty-day review.
Second.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors approve policy DBA budget committee. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you please call the roll, please?
She and Kim.
Hi.
Erica Lopez.
Hi.
Patrick McGuire.
Hi.
Monique Ward.
Opposed.
Nancy Thomas.
Hi.
Mark Watson.
Hi. Motion carries. All right. Uh, next up. Feels like it dovetails on our last conversation. Michelle, do you have anything with the financial report this month?
Uh, thank you Chair Watson. I would like to call out a kind of a. Unique situation with our finance manager, Jenna, Jennifer Stabatsky. She um, we are required to for checks that haven't been cashed. That we have outstanding over a long period of time that we report that to um. Lost property uh, to the state of Oregon and as we, she was going through that process, she also checked on behalf of the district to see if we had. Uh, things that had been paid to us that were outstanding and so she's in the process of collecting on that right now. Uh, found twenty-five instances where that has happened, so um. Very, very excited about that. Um, also our uh, risk manager, Mary Beth Punchacar, after she had done some review and uh, of the data that you guys had been receiving over the course of. Um, last year, she uh, had intended to make changes to those reports, but she didn't want to do that necessarily without making sure that she understood the context. Um, so that there was consistency in data. So what she did was went back and provided uh, similar reports that you guys have had in the past. So having this last year be kind of a new baseline for data and moving forward. Um, so if there are very specific things that you'd like to see different in both our incidents and Workman's Comp reporting. Um, I'd definitely like to visit with you about that and see what we can do, but the information is there in this packet.
Any questions for Michelle or any comments?
I do. If the public wanted that same thing, would it require a public information request?
Above and beyond what's in the board packet?
Hmm. If the, if the public said, I think I want to know what that is. Do they have to ask for a request for information?
Yeah, we have information readily available. We would share that with them. This is all posted publicly on the website, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Uh, our next report is the October twenty twenty-two, twenty-two enrollment report, Connor.
Good evening. So I just wanted to start off that um, we're excited to share some news uh, in regards to enrollment. But know that this is a longstanding report that we've had uh, for the beginning of October enrollment over many years and um, you can see that our. We have seen a decrease when we look at twenty twenty-two compared to twenty twenty-one by two hundred and twelve students. Um, and some things I want to point out in this report is that we've had an equal number of students transferring out. And into the Hillsborough School District at sixty-seven. Uh, we've had an increase of enrollment at the Hillsborough Online Academy of about two hundred students between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two. And a part of that was um, we were growing that program to include elementary primary grades. And then we've also seen an increase of about a hundred more students at Rosedale Elementary over the last two years, uh, which will be the location. Of our new elementary school, Tammerack. And uh, so it's great to see that growth. Like the population of Hillsborough, we are becoming a global majority district and so when you look at the pages uh, seventy in the last five years' data. You're going to see an increase in um, areas uh, regarding race and our students. And then you can also take a look at the top at our staffing ratios and Beth pointed out earlier on that we've made a commitment to really focus on our grades one through three. To have lower class sizes um, as we have been in the pandemic and coming out of it. Internally, we always keep our own kind of records of our enrollment comparison and we had our projections from May of twenty twenty-two. And so as we rolled up each of those grade levels in kindergarten through eleventh grade because our twelfth graders um, finished out. Um, we have seen slight decreases in grades one through five. And grade eleven uh, from about a, uh, ten to a little more than twenty less students in those particular grade levels. In contrast, uh, we have seen increases in some areas and so I just want to point those out. Um, and you won't see that here per se in the report, but I think it's important for you to know because you receive our monthly enrollment uh, reports that we share with you. And so we have about sixty more kindergartners that have enrolled uh, this last year. And we have about six or seven more students in grades six, seven and nine that um, have enrolled. And then twenty-five more eighth graders as well as forty more students in tenth and forty more students in twelfth grade. So when we look at that kind of comparison from May twenty twenty-two to the end of September. We're seeing about a hundred and forty more students who have enrolled in the Hillsborough School District. So even though we look at this and we see October to October to October. We're looking at where our projections are at the end of the year in, in May and looking at how they are uh, coming in as we start the fall. And so one of the things that we have also been doing is re- reaching out to families uh, and trying to learn more. Who want to learn more about the Hillsborough Online Academy for, for folks and families that are interested uh, in a online option. And then some of the things that we've also learned is that we kind of, I call scale up and look at what's happening across the state. Uh, in a recent uh, presentation with COSA, they shared that enrollment statewide has been down about thirty thousand students over the last few years. But the good news is that we're seeing enrollment trend as an increase and so we have about ten thousand more students across the state. They're coming and enrolling into um, our state public schools. And uh, another thing that I want to point out is if you look on page sixty-nine, um, you can see that the student enrollment has declined. By more than about fifty-six hundred students across the eight districts in Washington County. So when we see trends of decrease of enrollment, it's not just a Hillsborough situation. It's something that we're also seeing across um, our metro area. And I've also done a review of the state data um, and looking at uh, the last five years in terms of enrollment across the state. And we are seeing a decline in kindergarten numbers. Those numbers have consistently gone down. Which I think matches that lower birth rate level that we see at the local, state and national level. So I just wanted to bring, point that out. And then the last thing I wanted to share with you is that we have consistently worked with our demographers to just kind of um, see what the trends are for enrollment, potential enrollment moving forward. And they look to see and use our October um, beginning of October enrollment data. And then they will gather that information and by the end of February, we'll have more information in regards to where we're at for the next few years we're planning forward. So um, that is the report and are there any questions uh, for this tonight?
Questions for Connor?
So we had an equal, um, all. We had almost equal declines in the tenders in the seventh and eighth grade, which I have no clue what that correlation means.
I think sometimes um, you said declines. We're, we're up in kindergarten.
Well, no, percentage growth is but down one, oh wait, did I do that? Yeah. Oh, no, they're up and then I apologize.
I see what you're saying is the negative number there. Yeah.
Yeah, there is a negative.
Yeah, we are seeing um, the numbers down, but as I shared with you before when we had looked at kind of like seeing more. Of the eighth graders coming in, so we have about twenty-five more eighth graders, but it's more of the seventh graders that we're seeing, you know, down in terms of numbers, so. But when we look at that May, remember we go back to May and we make that comparison to what we have now, we are seeing about a hundred and forty more students overall. Um, compared to um, what we had projected. So we're pleased with that information.
So we're better than what we projected, but we're still down two hundred and twelve students.
Correct.
And. The, the bulk, so the biggest percent decrease is seven, eight.
Yep.
And, and that's mostly in the eighth grade.
Yep, mostly like seventh, probably more seventh grade.
Sorry. Yeah, eighth grade is actually up. It's mostly seventh grade, so. Does that mean, so it's, it's year to year seventh grade. It doesn't mean fewer sixth graders. It doesn't mean. A hundred and forty-sixth graders didn't go to seventh grade. It's just seventh grade was bigger last year than this year. Um, so, so that, that could still be lingering pandemic effects.
Yes.
Because those sixth graders would have. Gone home at spring break in the fourth grade.
Correct.
Yeah.
And maybe not have come back yet. So it'll be interesting to see if they come back for high school. Because many charter schools don't cover or homeschools cover.
Correct.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know that you mentioned that it was a trend um, statewide, you know, especially at the younger or um, ages. But what is the national trend? Is it similar to other? Other states have the same challenges?
I haven't uh, dug into that data, but would be happy to do that and follow up in a board update if you'd like.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be just goods for context to understand. I think sometimes. Um, seeing like if, a, a lot of times people are like, a lot of people are moving into Oregon and, but what does that really mean? Is it just? You know, um, for employment and is not really families with young children? If, if there's other industries, like where are they going if it's, or if it, or if this is actually something that's happening all over the country?
Any other questions?
And just one more clarification, uh, across Washington County, most districts are down with tenders and we're up. Okay.
Proud to be HSD.
Well, I guess the only, the only other question I have then, it goes back to where we were. I look at the, the numbers of twenty thousand um, October twenty nineteen, pre-COVID. And I know you couldn't put all the numbers on there, but I'm, I'm wondering, is, is that the highest population we've ever had? Or are we on a decline?
Well, if you go to page sixty nine, you can see our data from two thousand twelve and forward on the historical data. So you can kind of see where we're at there.
Thank you.
So we've kind of hovered around that twenty thousand mark for several, for many years.
Uh huh. So we stayed at twenty thousand, almost through two twenty, uh, twenty twenty, which is the beginning of the pandemic and the question. Can we get it back up there or hmm, it's interesting.
That is the question. It's with all of the construction that's happening in Hillsborough. You would think the answer would be yes. The question is, with people moving into those houses, are they going to have kids or not?
Exactly.
And that's, that's even the challenge that we're experiencing in South Hillsborough is that lots of houses out there. But we've still got space at Rosedale. I mean, it, we're gaining on it. It's, you know, we'll, we'll be full before too long.
Yeah.
But when we open next year, um, I wouldn't expect to see Tamrac full. That will not be the case. It'll, it'll have a lot of room for growth still. And um, of course, when we put our bond numbers together, um, there were expectations that that school would be full by the time we opened it. And remember, we delayed it a year. It should have opened this school year. We delayed it a year, so it'll open next school year. And even at that, it will have lower numbers than anticipated. So clearly, um, not as many families moving into those houses with kids as we expected.
Well, and pandemic slowed the rate of construction dramatically too. There's not nearly as many houses there alone that we expect to be by now.
Very true. Right.
So there's, there's just a lot of, lots of factors, I think, involved, but I think it, it is, thank you for including the information about prior years, because it then tells me if, if our highest has been about twenty thousand and I don't know, it's, it's a whole lot easier to get the money if the population is up, but if it isn't, then we have to fall, I don't know. That's, it'll be interesting to see if we get back up to twenty.
Do we, last, so the, uh, this year, do we have more kindergartners than we graduated in high school?
Typically, we've had fewer kindergartners that are like graduating seniors. We've had larger classes um, in our high school, um, as they finish out high school and then lower enrollment for kindergarten as they enter.
Do we, do we know where, or have we felt the impact of any charter school diversion of funds in this district?
Yeah, we have, we have a number of students that access online education through charters. And that's a, you know, that's a trend in Oregon for sure, that there's students that are going there.
So some of the charters are actually online schools. They're not.
Oh, yeah.
They're not just comprehensive.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's the three percent cap that was in our handout upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess keep the microphone or Michelle's already got one. So our next item is shared by Connor and Michelle. Discussion of our retention bonus plan.
Thank you. So um, we are pleased to announce tonight that we have a retention bonus uh, for our licensed and classified staff. And uh, we have received the one-time grant funds for house bill forty thirty that is focusing on retention and recruitment. And um, that was uh, two and a half million, million dollars, and we have to have it spent by June thirtieth, twenty twenty three um, for um, us to be able to have access to this. And we are really focusing on, we also want to focus on the high needs that we need for our workforce shortage, you know, both for um, classified and licensed, particularly classified, I would say. And then just addressing those root causes uh, about workforce attrition. Um, making sure that we're also uh, focusing on our goals that connect back to our strategic plan around diversifying our workforce. And then also affording mentorship to our uh, force or workforce that is diverse and um, putting things in place to support that. So um, we have come to uh, have conversations with Hillsborough Education Association and Hillsborough Classified United. And we sent out a staff survey in the spring to solicit feedback from folks uh, in regards to what buckets, how we could, how we should um, kind of utilize and spend the buckets of money that we have focused. And so we had about eleven hundred uh, staff respond to that. And we were able to um, come today and share that we will be um, dispensing money of seven hundred dollars for both classified and licensed. Um, and uh, in our conversations with Hillsborough Classified United, uh, we uh, came upon September thirtieth, twenty twenty two as the date uh, for the benefits level eligibility. And so uh, we have a table in here that talks about the prorated components of that. And then if you turn the page uh, for licensed staff, it is based on the full-time equivalency or FTE. And um, that is also prorated. And we came upon that all licensed staff hired by September thirtieth, twenty twenty two would receive that. Our classified staff who are probationary or temporary will receive their seven hundred dollars and the prorated amount at the end of the school year, which is a part of the retention piece as well. And so um, the targeted date for the distribution of these funds will be November tenth, twenty twenty two. And so our hope is to have a, a, a different date than the regular pay of uh, uh, November twentieth is our normal payday scheduled. And so um, Michelle, did you want to add anything to that?
Questions regarding the retention bonus?
Thank you. A lot of good luck.
One of the elements is supposed to be recruitment. Are we spending some of our forty thirty in that regard?
Yes, we are spending some of our money focusing on working with a marketing firm to uh, address shortages and uh, ways that we can try to market uh, our positions that are open and available uh, that are hard to fill.
Uh, and last meeting, we were looking for our I S for an update. We knew that there were potentially twenty new bus drivers going through the process of getting there. Uh, Nancy's son had transportation to the game tonight, so she's able to join us in person as opposed to last week or two weeks ago. So have we seen some of them complete their training and enter the workforce?
I think we're getting closer to that mark of time for folks to uh, be able to do that. Just as a reminder that it takes about six weeks to get there. And so we are seeing more uh, folks applying for positions and um, being able to hire them and train them uh, for those positions.
I was also going to ask if any of those, like the recruiting efforts, um, I've see every industry have hiring bonuses for people that sign on, that, you know, stay on a certain amount of time. Are we doing anything like that?
Well, I think one of the things, and you were a part of the conversation, Erica, uh, when we went through bargaining, um, we made a decision uh, in our negotiation process that we would add a step to both licensed and classified, uh, which is what I call a long-term investment in our staff, um, that will never go away. Uh, whereas a bonus sometimes is just for a short period of time. And so that was um, our investment in staff because we value the work that they do. And we wanted to have a contract uh, and a salary schedule that was going to be competitive. And that was going to be longstanding in our values of, of supporting our staff as well.
And how do we rate in that competitive range?
I think, you know, for being the, yeah, Michelle, want to speak to that?
Do. We, um, as we went through the bargain process, we were very careful as we moved in both for HCU in terms of the wage study that we did and applying increases in specific areas um, that we were competitively low with other districts. So um, that was definitely a factor. And then um, of course with uh, HEA, that's always a consideration as well. That was one of our uh, priorities during our bargain. So definitely. Yeah. And just, just a note on the uh, amount of the retention bonus. Our initial conversations with our uh, union partners were for less. Um, knowing that uh, if we go a little bit more, uh, we would likely have to supplement this grant with some ESSER funds. So I just want to make sure that we're transparent as we are trying to make sure that we're meeting uh, the needs of our staff as well as um, the needs of the grants and uh, eligible expenses under those programs. I just wanted to bring that forward. And to um, add on to what Connor said, really making it stand out as a separate payment to our employees. So they don't confuse this with the regular compensation, but it really is um, very specific targeted payment um, to show value. Thank you.
So you, you opened up the door of the ESSER funds and, and my question is, is that, you said that's where the other money was coming from? To make up with this. How does that impact us if we're diverting our ESSER funds from where they were supposed to come?
We, we have had some flexibility in the funds for some of the targeted things that we were doing with it. Um, in terms of uh, student activities, whether we had targeted towards certain positions that we weren't able to fill. So I don't anticipate that it's going to be a largely material, material amount, but it is um, something that we wanted to be transparent about because as we are uh, compared to other districts, we did a survey on what their retention bonuses were looking like for staff. And just making sure that um, we were hitting the mark as close as we could.
The situation, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to ask something, but you had something.
Well, the situation we found ourselves in last year, we were unable to um, fill some staffing positions. I mean, clearly that was something we talked about all year. Um, some of the activity, the things we weren't able to do because of the circumstances we were in. So we found that we had some additional ESSER dollars that we were able to put towards this to, in order to be competitive.
Yeah.
So the, if I'm understanding this correctly, the two point five eight six million is the amount of the grant, that some of which is being used for recruitment, some of which is being used for retention. So what is the total amount being spent on these retention payments specifically?
Just right around two point two million. So the majority of the grant will be spent on the retention bonuses. Um, but we still do have many other activities in place um, as well. And we can provide a board update with those in detail if that would be helpful.
Oh wait, I appreciate the two point two, understanding the total cost of this. And then was this already in the budget or did it require a separate board action?
No, it's already included in our current appropriations that we set.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd expected the four thirty funds. Guess we didn't quite know the exact number, but we knew they were coming and kind of how we would spend them and, and yeah, just for context from being on the bargaining committee, you know, the, there, there are other districts who laid people off during the pandemic and um, then use some of their ESSER funds as sort of bonus incentives to get some people to come back. We never laid anybody off. Uh, and I'm super grateful for that. And uh, we were co-op, very cooperatively with our union to, to, to complete the wage study. And in bargaining, we were able to make our classified positions more competitive with the ones in the district. And then, you know, uh, so I think of it as less diverting ESSER funds from someplace else. They're, they're, they're going where they're supposed to have gone. And we just maybe took a little bit longer to getting there as we tried to keep all of our staff employed throughout the course of the pandemic.
I guess I should clarify to make sure I'm understanding, since I wasn't part of the last budget cycle.
Sure.
Um. The funds are coming from this grant. So what is the ESSER amounts that we're discussing?
So the ESSER amount, probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, maybe. It really depends on the actual amount that we pay out. They're all based on estimates given our current staff. So it depends on how many we retain to the end of the year as well. So um, I'm assuming.
So we're sort of saying that we've blocked off a portion, a small portion of this grant, the HB forty thirty funds for other items. And so if we don't have enough remaining to fully fund this, then that small additional funding needed will come from this other part.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We're going to need Patrick on the budget committee.
Welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thanks. I'm very glad to see that we got this done.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm glad that we had these conversations with our union partners and um, it's nice to be able to celebrate. Thank you.
Moving on, our next item is a, an AR administrative regulation. Again, reminder board approval not required, but if you have any questions, uh, it's just a, it's not even third day review. Is it just letting us know we're making a change? Yeah, okay. So the change is indicated in your packet. If you have any questions, you can reach out to, looks like on the AR, it's Connor and Michelle. Uh, the next is, next item is first reading of policies. There are a few listed here. Um, are they basically legal compliance with changing, so, so we're, for, for everybody, we're sort of in that period where uh, legislation from the session this spring is going into effect and um, OSPA is updating us on compliant language. So um, we may see a few of these over the course of the next couple of sessions. So Mike has listed, or Rose has listed the people responsible for each one of the policies. So if you have questions, uh, as they are on first review today, you know who to direct your questions to? Any general questions now on that?
Uh, yeah, um. I don't want to create additional work for our admin team or board secretary, but a comment throwing out there. Um, it, it seems our practice is to have a number of policies on the consent agenda and a number of policies. And many of them, another policy is not on the consent agenda, but it seems many of them are technical or conforming adjustments to recent laws passed. And a few of them are uh, more substantive, but mostly it's conforming. Um, I think it might be helpful to have like a one-page in our packet just of a few sentences on each policy of why it's changing. Um.
Executive summary?
Often I'm left to sort of read through the previous policy and the current policy and notice the changes and sort of puzzle out which ones come from statute and which ones come from best practices. Um, so it might be nice just for our time sake to have an executive summary of this is what's changing in this policy. This is why.
I think, well, generally, it's.
It's oftentimes members.
Yeah, it's gray in there, what's changing, and then something that's stricken or whatever. So that's sort of like the easy way to read it. Consent agenda would be the policies that were put on last time.
Yeah.
But I, I think to Patrick's point, some of them, you don't know if it's because of state required like language or if it's just a change in better practice.
Yeah, I think it would just go in, but I like your idea, but it would just go in like for the few, for the ones we're putting on first review. I don't know that we need to cover the consent agenda once again, if we cover them on first reading, right?
Right.
We, we actually, when we receive the policies from OSPA, we actually get a two or three sentence summary. So.
Pass those on.
Actually, what I mean to say is, we'll put in many extra hours. Yeah, that, yeah, Rose, Rose will put in many extra.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I've spent time comparing and, yeah, right. Um, all right, well, reports, HCU, HEA, we are there.
Hello, good evening. I want to start by saying that the classified staff are thankful for the retention bonuses coming out. Um, and that they'll, they'll start coming out next month. Um, those are a token of thanks for the work that the classified and licensed staff did during the pandemic and retention from that staff. Oh. Sorry, my screen just scrolled. Got to find myself now. Um, so as part of the classified staff, I would like to say thank you for these bonuses and um, for making us feel valued with these bonuses. Thank you. Um, while many new staff members have been hired, we are still facing a large number of vacancies in our district. Many among the classified staff, it's already been pointed out tonight. Uh, we are still in a critical level with transportation, specifically the drivers. Um. We have been and talked with the district on wage adjustments for many of the transportation um, department over the past couple of months. And we appreciate the conversations with the district's bargaining team to reach a tentative agreement. A vote for the wage adjustments will be presented to our union members soon. Um, early next month. Um, however, the vacancies do not stop there. We continue to have shortages in many classifications. And it may not be to the same level as the drivers. It is still short and it does have an impact on the students and the staff in those classified positions. Um, I would like to send a thank you out to those that are doing the extra work and working the extra hours to make sure our students get fed and our schools are cleaned. Thank you to the kitchen staff, the custodians, the facilities, and the others that are stepping up to fill in the areas where we have sta, uh, short-staffed. I do continue to come here to speak on behalf of the classified employees. We love. We love our jobs and supporting the students of H S D. However, the burnout is real. With shortages and doing more with less staff adds to the stress we are all experiencing. But we look forward to continuing our work with the district to come up with creative solutions to the challenges of this school year with both staff shortages, staff morale, and positive mental health for everyone. Even with the challenges this school year has, we are certain that we can find many successes that are classified and other staff members will have this school year. May we find a way to celebrate our students and staff members accomplishments. And we look forward to working with you on the betterment of H S D. And just a friendly reminder as we move forward that we have a small election coming up on November eighth. If you haven't, just in case you haven't heard, not aware of it. Be sure to get your ballots back in the mail or drop them off at one of the many ballot boxes in Washington County. There are some very important races happening during this election. And I'm not going to tell you how to vote. I am just encouraging everyone that is registered to vote, please. National American Education Week is coming up November thirteenth through the nineteenth. And I look forward to this week and celebrating all of our educators in our district. And this includes teachers, classified administrators, substitute educators, and our families. Each day has a different theme. On Thursday, November eighteenth is educator for a day. So I encourage each of you to to go out and work alongside one of the many classified employees in the district. You can help serve lunches, maybe sweep a classroom, ride a bus. You can even join one of the many media assistants throughout their day while they help students navigate their libraries, check out books, maybe read to them. There are many options, so let's celebrate all of the educators in our district that week and every week. If you need assistance finding a place to help, feel free to reach out to me and I'll match you up with one of my officers. And you can tag along with them. We have a couple of bus drivers too, so thank you very much for your time.
It's Friday, November eighteen. Friday, November eighteen, is that, but sorry, Melody, was that Friday, November eighteen? Thursday.
Good evening Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow board members, Superintendent Scott, and administrative leaders. I'd first like to start by thanking the school board for all the work that you do to support our educators, our students, and our community. October is National Learning and Development Month. As we reach the end of October, I'm delighted to see how many students are learning and growing this year. We've made so many strides since last year and we still have so much to do in order to truly meet the needs of all of our students. I've been reflecting on our last strategic planning session and we were asked to write down our dream for education. Bless you. My answer was, I want funding for all the things. And somebody said, you need to go talk to your legislators. Vote. According to Denver educator Kevin Adams, the world I want to work in doesn't exist yet. But the work I'm doing with my union and my colleagues is to create the right systems for teaching and learning, the ones we dream about, the ones we want to see. We look forward to working with you in collaboration to support our sped department at the upcoming listening session on November eighth. It is concerning that we're at the end of October and we're still experiencing staff shortages. We appreciate the efforts that you've made to recruit new hires, but we need to find a way to attract qualified applicants as soon as possible. We encourage you to utilize all the available resources to continue to incentivize retention and recruitment of necessary sped staff. And we urge you to continue to listen to educators to find long-term solutions to the staffing crisis. Our educators care deeply about the needs of their students. However, they are working through their lunches and their prep time to stay on top of their workload to ensure a trained professional is remains in the room. This is not contractual and this is unacceptable. Needless to say, this is putting a huge strain on our education educators to balance instruction and the needs of our students and their self-care. We feel the impact of not having enough in educational assistance in our general education classrooms. An indirect result is that we're underserving our students' needs and we're seeing a spike in student behavior. Our contract states disruptive student behavior will not be allowed to hinder the progress of the class. It also states the administrator or designated will communicate with the unit member prior to the student returning to class. There is additional language regarding procedures for physical and threatening behavior. The need to communicate and or review clear discipline plan and what protocol, what protocols educators can take to support dysregulated students is vital to maintaining our working conditions and our students' learning conditions. We all deserve a working environment that promotes a safe space to work in one. We are looking forward to hosting a meeting with building administrators to review our contract language along with discipline plans. We hope our joint efforts with the district will offer much-needed guidance to better support our educators and our students on Thursday at our contract one-on-one training. In conclusion, on behalf of all of our members, I would like to thank this board for taking the final step in finalizing the recruitment and retention bonuses for our members. H E A and H S D have had many conversations, meetings, calls, emails, in an effort to arrive at this agreement. We commend the district personnel, Superintendent Mike Scott, and this board on your movement to meet the needs of our educators. We look forward to continuing the collaboration to address the critical needs of our sped departments. Lastly, remember to get out the votes, our students are relying on you. Thank you.
All right. Next up is student representatives time. I don't know if you guys drawn lots to see who goes first, or do you have anything, anything you want to add tonight?
So on Saturday, is this on?
Closer.
So on Sa- so on Saturday, October twenty ninth is the Century Showcase in which a lot of bands from Oregon and Washington come down to the Post-Rohof Stadium and compete in a competition that we host for marching bands. And they span, and the marching bands usually span from like twenty people to like a hundred and two, a hundred and twenty. I'm very excited because this is my last year, I'll be there to host. And I get to see all these amazing people put on amazing like shows. And I am inviting you all and hopefully maybe some of you will come and support our band. Thank you.
So today, before I came to this meeting, we had our Tuesday weekly Metcha Club. And we saw over thirty plus students, so that was really, it was really eye-opening on how our community came together. And it was also very diverse, so it wasn't just Latinx people, but other ethnicities. So I'm really proud about that. And so I want to also encourage you all to visit high school, middle schools, elementarys, and visit their clubs, their extracurriculars. And yeah, just chill, thank you.
Just a few little things I'm kind of excited about. I just ordered my cap and gown to graduate, which is really weird. I've always complained about like, you know, not liking high school, but I was like ordering it with my mom and all my announcement cards and lining up my senior pictures. And I was like, I was just eleven in like seventh grade. I was like, this is so weird. So I was really excited. I also ordered my tassel, so it's all official now, hopefully. I will definitely graduate, I'm just kidding, I'm definitely gonna graduate. I was totally a joke. What else? Oh, I, so I'm two things. I'm running mock trial this year, which I'm not sure if you guys are familiar. It's where students, every school that has that program gets presented a case and you guys argue it in front of a presiding judge in Oregon or an attorney. This is my third year doing it and this year I'm running it, which is pretty cool. One thing I'm trying to do is trying to instill as a class at my high school, just for it to be able to reach more kids because it is a career-oriented class. And it's taught me a lot, it's built me a lot of connections in the law field, which is really cool. I've already have connections with two lawyers and a judge in Oregon at seventeen, which is really weird. So if any of you guys are interested, the competition is in February. And if any of you guys have connections in the law field, my name is Kayla McGuire and that would be greatly appreciated. One more thing, totally forgot. What was I gonna say? Oh, yeah, kind of what you were talking about, the election. I'm seventeen, so I can't vote, but hopefully you guys are all registered and vote because our rights are also on the line, but we have, we can't vote yet, so please vote. Thanks.
I assure you, your parents think you're eleven like last week. Superintendent's time.
All right, thank you. First of all, I'm thrilled to, that we were able to vote the retention bonus through tonight. That it has been a heck of a couple of years and to be able to do that, I think is a a great nod to our staff who have done incredible things over the last couple of years and continue to do so in challenging circumstances. I'd also like to join Melody in thanking our staff who are working overtime, are working extra hours, who are using for licensed staff, are using their preps to fill in vacancies that are there every day. And we, day after day, we have people stepping up to fill those needs, so really appreciate that and I did want to call that out. We definitely are experiencing staffing shortages, like you've heard from both our folks here this evening. Do know that we are engaging with a marketing team and the marketing firm. And the whole idea there is to increase our ability to attract viable candidates. Clearly, this is a county issue and it's a local issue and it's a statewide issue for us. But we do feel like there's some things that we can do to be more attractive to candidates and to get the word out regarding our need in a bigger way. So be looking, Connor will be giving you updates on that as we move forward. We are looking forward to H C U having their vote regarding the salary schedule and then that will be back in front of the board during our next time here together. I, we, I've been doing school visits, most recently Century and West Union, two very different schools. But just seeing the enthusiasm again of the, of the students and and really just the, the staff to be back together with kids in a more typical way has, continues to be a highlight. We do have three, four events that I want to highlight that for the rest of this week. We have Congresswoman Bonamici coming tomorrow and she'll be here to learn about the youth apprenticeship program. And that will be two o'clock at Century, if anyone would like to join us. On Thursday, we do have the faith luncheon. That has been a great opportunity for us over the last twenty years or so to thank our faith partners for all the volunteer work and for meeting the many needs of our students that they step up for on a, on a regular basis. Mary Kay mentioned it, but we have the contract one-on-one meeting. And we really do view the contracts that we bargain as the rules that we've agreed to play within. And so when we have a new contract and we have the opportunity to do rep training, rep and principal training together and to get on the same page regarding those most important issues. And that has always proved to be time really well spent for us to avoid a lot of confusion as we move forward. And then the final event that I'll highlight is the coffee chat nine thirty at the South Store. If you've never been to the South Store, it's a great place to go. It's out near Groner. And we have tried to move the starting times of these coffee chats to different times throughout the morning. This one happens to be at nine thirty and that's on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. For director's time, we'll start with Sheen online. Sheen, do you have anything you'd like to add this evening? She muted, you just turned down. Hold on a second, Sheen, we cannot hear you. Oh, I started here.
Sheen, can you check your sound? If you can hear us? Your volume? Okay.
We still can't hear you, we're checking into it, I guess.
No, not yet.
No, we cannot. Okay. I don't know how we work on it and come back, but maybe exit the meeting and come back and then we'll see if you're good. So we'll start with Erica.
I just had a couple of things. One, with the, we were talking earlier about advocating for a workforce and the different challenges we're having in that. And I think Beth, we were talking about illustrating, how does that impact students and really hearing about also, you know, classified staff and what does that? What that, how do we paint that picture to include all the areas that it impacts? So just kind of, just to ensure that we're, we're going to speak to our legislators and there's going to be a lot of changes that we have the information to like paint that picture and that workforces across all areas in our districts are being impacted by that. So I, I just wanted to make sure that that's incorporated in our messaging as we go forward. The other thing, I also just appreciate that our faith luncheons are back. I think those are such a great opportunity to connect with the community. I think we're one of the only districts that does something like this with our faith community. And it really speaks volumes to the partnerships that we have in the community and volunteers and just, I think, the spirit of collaboration for our students. So I just really want to commend Mike for keeping that up and for ensuring that all aspects of our community feel connected to our districts. And then the last thing I wanted to add to maybe back to, sorry, I forgot one thing, back to the workforce. And I don't know, I guess when we're doing that marketing and, and trying to recruit people, I also was thinking about just how we're engaging with other community partners like other businesses or city or chamber to think about ways that our, our community is also a place that people want to come to not only work, but maybe live in and like what other ways can we incentivize people to come to Hillsborough? So just wanted to throw that out there. And the last thing was that next week is Dia de los Muertos. And there's a lot of awesome events in our elementary schools. So I was wondering if maybe in a board update, we could get some information about what schools usually hold. They have altars and demonstrations and it would be really cool to find an opportunity for us to go see that in our district. And it's a wonderful activities that I always love seeing, especially after COVID, it would be great to be able to get back into that. Thank you.
Monique, you have anything that to add tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. Patrick, anything to add?
I do, yes, a few things. First of all, it was a real pleasure to go with Mike and one of our nutrition services administrators to Mentor Bridge Elementary for National School Lunch Week and sit and have a school lunch with the wonderful fifth grade class there. And meet their wonderful principal and it was just a delightful time. And I, I got to visit with several of our, our wonderful classified employees, the lunch staff and custodial staff and just see how much they care about the kids there and how, how much they love their jobs. And so it was, it was really wonderful to be there with the kids and with the, the staff. And I'm so glad we're able to, to do these staff retention bonuses because it's, it's obvious how, how much they put their heart and soul into their jobs. And one of, one of the staff members even approached us and said, had some ideas on how we could reduce food rates. And so she, she was very mindful of that. And, and one of the fifth graders came to the table and a group of them came up, a lot of them was introducing himself. And he said, you know, I was asking, how do you, because it was National School Lunch Week. So I was asking, how do you like your, your lunches? And he says, I, you know, I really like them, but you know, I, I come from a, he actually had a very, for, for ten years old, he had a very composed presentation. I says, you know, from the Latino heritage background I come from, I wish we had more Taco Tuesdays. He said, you know, I, so he's, I like to see the, the food of my culture represent. I said, I love Taco Tuesdays too. I think we're gonna see what, see what we can do on that front. So that's from the, directly from the constituency, the report.
I did, I did love how he said, which one of you makes the menu?
Yeah. Yeah, that was great. And then I had a, a nice opportunity to sit next to a dinner recently, our new Portland Community College president and talk with her and tell her how enthusiastic Hillsborough School District is about our partnerships we have with Portland Community College. And she sounded really enthusiastic about the work she does with. And so she's been in the job for just a few months, so that's great to hear, we have a partner there. I wanted to mention also, in one of our policies, we had a first reading of tonight was about standards for research that for, that our staff do. I thought it would be lovely to hear if our staff has done any research recently because I'm, it makes me kind of curious that the policy is about the The policy is about the standards for if they want to do research, how it's, how everything's handled and protected, but I, I'd love to know about if our staff is doing research. We have some. Some brilliant uh, workers in our, they're going above and beyond, so that would be interesting. Um. Also, I wanted to mention to our student representatives, thank you very much for everything you're doing. Um. I think that, as you mentioned, a lot of our students aren't, don't directly have a voice in electing the school board because they're not eighteen yet, they're not registered voters, so. You are our biggest way that they get to have a voice and hearing, letting us know what's going on in the schools, what. Uh, what are our, especially our older students, what things would they like to see changed, what concerns are on their minds, so. Thank you. You have so much going on in your lives, but the, the, wh- what time you can spend gathering that feedback and bringing it to us, it really does help inform my decisions, so I appreciate that a lot. Um. And I want to say to our uh, union staff, one of the things briefly is, uh, I, I appreciate both of your reports today. Sometimes when I look back at my notes from meeting, I know our, our secretary tries to capture as much of the report as she can in. The minutes, but sometimes when I look back at my notes, there are a few things that are a little bit, I'm not quite sure what, what it was and so. If you ever feel comfortable doing so, I would love for you to submit your full written report, everything you want us to know about. Uh, to the board by email or to the board secretary, so it can be included in our packet because I'd love to be able to refer back to it later and you look at all the details because. I think in both of those reports, you mentioned a specific, I think it classified the join-in day. And then uh, you mentioned some of the things happening as well and I want to make sure that I don't, those don't slip between the cracks of everything that's going on, so. Thank you for considering that.
She and I see you return. Would you like to give it another shot?
I'll give it another shot. Can you guys?
Standing, we got you.
Uh-huh, great. I've been having some audio issues, so thank you everyone. Well, happy American Education Week. And just a huge special shout out to our education support professionals. Thank you really for. Um, so much of the unsung work that, that you do in the background and behind the scenes. Um, so huge shout out there. Um, my main thing that I wanted to mention tonight was. Uh, had the opportunity to attend the OSBA Legislative Roadshow with some of my board colleagues in the room and. You know, I think it, it was a small group of us that gathered, uh, but I think that. It, it reminded me again how important this upcoming election is, is going to be and especially if we enter into this. Uh, legislative session with so many new potential legislators. How important it's going to be for us to, to share our narrative. Um, and really to, to hone in on maybe one or two priorities, given that. They're, they're going to be dealing with, with so many, so many lobbyists and so many people coming, you know, to them. Um, how important it will be for, for us to really highlight. That the need for stable and adequate funding for K through twelve education and. Um, Beth, thank you so much for sending me the, the draft document. Um, I'll, I'll have a chance to review it since I wasn't in the room today. Um, but, you know, this. This upcoming session is going to be such a critical one, um, especially for. For our funding and um, I, yeah, I, I was just left with that um, after that meeting of. Uh, of how important it's going to be for all of us to get in front of our legislators and for, for all of us to really advocate for, for adequate and stable funding. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Nancy, anything you'd like to add tonight?
Um, actually, I had two things. Um. Confession, sometimes I come in and I can be down. A little bit because of day job or all the other stuff that you do, but I always seem to get through this time. Uh, because of the wonderful people who do what they do. So first of all, to the students. Get the cap and gown and enjoy the moment. Just, just stay in the moment, enjoy it because you're gonna blink and it's gonna be over. And you're gonna see Nancy with her blinged out chug in your school colors, coming to you to give you, so just saying. Um, in addition, I wanted to say, Kaylee specifically, um. Salmon P. Chase College of Law Newport winner and best order, happy to help. Um, and secondly, for our union representatives. Sign me up on November eighteen to read to the babies. I love reading kids, love it, love it, love it. Um, just let me know. If I get to play teacher assistant for a day, I'll be ecstatic. Or I can play the librarian, whichever one you want me to do. Um, and the other thing is, uh, the final thing I want to say is, um, I. Uh, was born in, I am the daughter of a US Marine. And so it is my custom and has been always for my entire life to say thank you to those who serve. What I have found is now that I have matured and now that I have arrived in the Pacific Northwest and now that I have. Taken the unprecedented step in my life to run for public office. I find myself saying that to teachers, administrators. People who work in the school, classified staff. I do, I say that to everybody and I, I want you to know that. So, I'm saying thank you for your service. I'm saying thank you for your service. I'm saying thank you for your service and I mean that. Um, there's, there's not enough money, there's not enough, there's not enough nothing right now that we can give you. To get you through what you're going through. There, that's the reality. Um, but you need to know that somebody told you, thank you. At least once a day. And I promise you, I will always be that person whenever I see you on. It means something to me that I can be a part of a community that will accept me as I am. And the unique experiences that I bring. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Thank you and thank you for your service. It has been a month for me, so missed a lot of events that I wanted to go to because I was wearing a hospital bracelet, but. Uh, you know, things are getting better, I think. Um. So hopefully I will see you at South Store Cafe to finally get to. Eat and chat with people, because I do love that one quite a bit. Um. Yes, and the faith luncheon, looking forward to that. I could, having volunteered for seven years at the Century Showcase, I can tell you, it's pretty awesome, so. Um, come on out, it's pretty great, yeah.
Can't wait to watch it.
Oh. Uh, I don't know if I've been to one where it didn't rain. For what it's worth. Um. Before we meet again, the Oregon School Boards Association will conduct its annual conference, I think, right? Yes, it is right before us. So, you know, for what it's worth, as a board member, we don't have a whole lot of opportunities for. Uh, what we call, um, you know, development in, in the school, so the. OSBA presents us ways to become better board members, become more informed on topics before, ways to understand and uh, you know, hopefully. I look forward to seeing all my colleagues there. Um, and I believe the Friday, you guys don't have school. So if any of our student representatives want to join us at the OSBA convention. We'll uh, work out carpentry and figure out a way to get, get all of you down there because it is really a great way to have. Really productive conversations with board members from all over the state who may have. Different political opinions on some things and, but we all share the common ground of trying to do the best we can for students and. It's great to coalesce around that idea and I'll hang out in one spot together, so hopefully we'll get to see you guys there. Um. That's probably it. Thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.